रवेनितु ये सु कृष्टो आर्यक नामलो मार्यक सारी मी अक्का पादसन इधिक उस्तोंतु नाम नाहित तणरी मीर ममली प्रेमिंची माकनुग्रेन्चन एटु वंती ई नोतन दिनाने बट्टी वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम मीर सर्वाधिकारी एनटु वंती देवड़ो नाहित तणरी सर्व शिक्ति गेली एनटु वंती देवड़ो मी अक्का शिक्ति अनंतम एनटु वंती दपारम एनटु वंती नाहित तणरी अलागे सर्व ज्ञानय एनटु वंती देवड़ो समस्तम यरी एनटु वंती देवड़ो नाहित तणरी सर्वांतर्याय मीन एटु वंती देव आम्ही के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम अंता महोन्नत तु एनटु वंती देवड़ो एनपट्टीकी ममली रक्षण छुटकोरके सातानी अक्का बंधकमलन डुमाली विडिपिंचुटकोरके देवनी तो ममली समाधान परछुटकोरके मीमणि मीर तकिंचकुणी मानवलो वकनी वंती वारै दास्तुन स्वरूपण दरिंचकुणी मरणमले नटु वंती मीर माकोरकु मरणमाई बुस्तापन चेबड़ी त्रिलेचुड्वारा नाकुनो मान्दरिकन प्रवाह मीर छुटकुण रक्षण बट्टी मी के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम प्रवाह ममली रक्षिंची प्रवाह मीर माकनुग्रेन्चन एटु वंती स्थानिक संघन बट्टी सार्वत्तिक संघन बट्टी मी के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम प्रवेनितु ये सु कृष्टो आर्यनंदु मीर माकनुग्रेन्चन एटु वंती प्रत्या आश्रवाद एनबट्टी मी के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम समस्तम एनटु वंती महिमा गणता प्रभावलो मी नाम उनके चलिनु गाक नाहिन तणरी मीर रक्षिंचुन एटु वंती प्रत्या अक्का बिदन बट्टी मी को वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम नाहित तणरी अल्लशुद्दाय प्रार्धन मंदिर एनबट्टी मी के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल गडिचुन एटु वंती रोय यादु संवच्छल्लो नाहित तणरी मीर चुपिन एटु वंती क्रोपंतत्तु बट्टी मीर चेसुन एटु वंती मेलंतत्तु बट्टी मी के स्तुति आराधन चलिस्तो नाम नाहिन तणरी आ... मीर एयरपोर्ट जेसुन एटु वंती एक स्थानिक संघन बट्टी मीर चुपिंचुन एटु वंती नमकत्व एनबट्टी मी के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल नाहित तणरी दिनम प्रवाह मी अक्का नमकत्व निग्नाप्कन जस्कुन्टु सिवर जुबरी नाहित तणरी सेलेब्रेट चेस्कुन्टुड़गा ये दिनम तटिकोरके मी अक्का क्रोपा सहायन मीम कोरकुन्टु नाम परिषुद्धात्मा देवनी अक्का नडिपिंपुंदै चमनी प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम ईरोज कार्यक्रमंतत्न प्रवाह आ मॉर्निंग नाहित तणरी सिंगिंग, बाइबल स्टडीज नाहित तणरी अलागे आ... ईवनिंग गुनेटु वंती थॅंक्सगिविंग मीटिंग कोरकु, टेस्टमानीज टाइम कोरकु, वर्षिप टाइम कोरकु शेरिंग ऑफ द वर्ड, ट्रांसलेशन विटन, नित्य प्रत्य परिचर्यनु प्रवाह नाहित तणरी अक्का क्रोपा हस्ताल काब्यपुकुन्टु नाम यंतु वंदे तय प्रवाह नाहित तणरी सकालानी क्रागल गयारो वरण वंदनालु स्तोत्राल यावर तय प्रवाह नाहित तणरी मार्गमध्यम लोचुनारो वार्णिकुरा मीर तरलो तीस्क्रमण प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम, वारी कॉल्सन एटु वंती सरेंटन ट्रांसपोर्ट देच्यामनी प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम ये दिनम प्रवाह नाहित तणरी मीम कल्सी कुड़िवची आ मी मंदिरावर नवलो गडिपेटु वंती समय मान्दरिकी मेल करंगच्यामनी प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम मी अक्का समास्मूहनुडी प्रवाह मीर ममली दर्शिंच्यामनी प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम मी अक्का सन्निधि वच्चुन एटु वंती प्रत्या वक्कर अनुभविंचुन अटलगा नाहित तणरी मी अक्का क्रोपन प्रसादिंच्यामनी प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम नाहित तणरी आया समस्यलो, आय बंदलु नाहित तणरी आया परिस्थितिलो नंची नाहित तणरी मे वंद्रम वेल्तुन नाम प्रवाह, मायका प्रत्य समस्यन मीर एरिगिन एटु वंती देवड़ो गोन अधुक वंदनालु स्तोत्राल मायका परिस्थितिमीर चूस्तुन एटु वंती देवड़ो गोन अधुक वंदनालु स्तोत्राल अलागे नाहित तणरी मायका प्रार्धन कुरा मीर आलकिंचे जवाब विच्य देवड़ो गोन अधुक वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तो नाम नाहित तणरी प्रत्या वक्करनी वारी अक्का अवसरतन बट्टी अक्रण बट्टी प्रकटिंचुबड़े एटु वंती वाक्यम द्वारा प्रत्या वक्करनी दर्शिंची प्रवाह नाहित तणरी वारु मी चाता मेलन नंदिन वारै संतोषम तोट्टी मी अक्की इंटलो नंची त्रिवलिन अटलगा मी अक्का सहायन देच्यामनी प्रार्धन जस्तो नाम अलागे नाहित तणरी दिनम वनेटु वंती आया नाहित तणरी मिगिन एटु वंती परिचर्यलन, नित्य कोरकु नाहित तणरी किचन नाहित तणरी अलागे आ... नाहित तणरी सर्विंग नाहित तणरी अशरिंग, नाहित तणरी पार्किंग, नाहित तणरी मिगिन एटु वंती स्पेशली ईवनिंग, थॅंक्सगिविंग मीटिंग कोरकु गुडमीर मी वेब चुस्तो नाम वातावरणानी मी अक्का स्वादेनुंचुकुण्डी प्रवाह नाहित तणरी अलागे लाइव स्ट्रीमिंग विषमलो कुरा मी अक्का सहायन उनग्रेन्चन डी प्रत्य विदम एनटु वंती आठंकमुनो डिस्ट्रबेंसन प्रवाह मीर तोलगिंच्यामनी प्रार्धन जस्तो ममली लंदरनी प्रवेनितु ये सु कृष्टो आर्यक रक्त प्रवेशन किंदिकी तीस्कुनोस्तु नाहित तणरी परिषुद्धात्मा देवनी अक्का आ दिनमलो ममलनंदनुच्यामनी मी के वंदनालु स्तोत्राल चलिस्तु माप्रभुनु रक्षकुडे एटु ये सु कृष्टो आर्यक नामलो प्रार्धन छुएडुकुन्चु नाम तणरी, आमेन
We will sing song number one from the song sheets, पादसंकेय होकटी पादपत्रल लोची, पादसंकेय होकटी
(संगीत) इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे इरुवदै देन्नु काछे कोरतले नी मेलनिचे इरुवदै देन्नु काछे कोरतले नी मेलनिचे चेचे प्रजलनंदरीनो चेरी पाडिस्तुतिन्चे दमु सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे भुविपशेत्रुनी पनिनापे भुविपशेत्रुनी पनिनापे विनिनवारीनी प्रत्यक्षी चेरी पाडिस्तुतिन्चे दमु सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे नेहरपे सत्यमर्मबुलु नेहरपे सत्यमर्मबुलु चेरी पाडिस्तुतिन्चे दमु सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सेवखुलने चेलु बहुगाह कावलीयु चेन्न प्रभुवे सेवखुलने चेलु बहुगाह कावलीयु चेन्न प्रभुवे सहपनीवारी नोसगे चेरी पाडिस्तुतिन्चे दमु सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे अंतियोकवले चेसे अंतियोकयवले चेसे स्वंतमुगनु चेसिकोडे चेरी पाडिस्तुतिन्चे दमु सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सरिगलोवरचे वनलाम सरिगलोवरचे वनलाम करमुनीचे लडिपिचे चेरी पाडिस्तुतिन्चे दमु सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे चेरीस्तुतिन्चे दमु हल्लेलुया सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे सुतिन्तुन परिषुतुनी आराधरतो इन्तवरकु काछे देवुडे
पादसंकेय रेंडो पादसंकेय रेंडु वाट्कुन्नो Song number two from the song sheets येसु नामम् मधुरमधुर सुतिकीयोगमु प्रभुनीनामम् सुतिकीयोगमु प्रभुनीनामम् मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् स्वर्गमुवीडी जगमुनकरिगी सिलुवलवरतमु चिंदिंचे नु स्वर्गमुवीडी जगमुनकरिगी सिलुवलवरतमु चिंदिंचे नु मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् सिलुआपैसैथा नुनुओडिंची तोलगिंचे नु नरखासिक्षारु सिलुआपैसैथा नुनुओडिंची तोलगिंचे नु नरखासिक्षारु मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् पापुलकुवी मोचनमोसगी एपुगतन्रितोनैक्यमु जेसन पापुलकुवी मोचनमोसगी नेहरपुगतन्रितोनैक्यमु जेसन मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् रक्तमुचेममु शुतुलजेसन देवनीपूत्रुगाममु बाचन रक्तमुचेममु शुतुलजेसन देवनीपूत्रुगाममु बाचन मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् आत्मलोवारसु लुगममु जेसन आत्मलोवारसु लुगममु जेसन मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् सुतिकीयोगमु प्रभुनीनामम् सुतिकीयोगमु प्रभुनीनामम् मधुरमधुरमु येसु नामम् We will sing song number nine Song number nine पादसंकेय तुम्हेदी चिन्न पिलाल दाइचे स्मार्ट आड़ कोड्डो शब्द गुण डेडी, येंगे मीटिंग टाइमलो बाईटिकलो पिल्टी रख गोड्डो, पक्षतालमलो गोचुड्डी सरना?
(संगीत) निर्मिंचमण्टीरी प्रभुआ निर्मिंचमण्टीरी प्रभुआ इश्रायेनु निवासमोकटी एरपरचमण्टीरी प्रभुआ इश्रायेनु निवासमोकटी एरपरचमण्टीरी प्रभुआ तुम्मकरतो मंदस्मूनु तुम्मकरतो मंदस्मूनु चेसीबंगारुनु पोदिगिंचिन चेसीबंगारुनु पोदिगिंचिन तुम्मकरे मर्वेयनी अंतिर तुम्मकरा मीरे अंतिर करुणापीटमु कावलेनंतिर करुणापीटमु कावलेनंतिर करुणापीटमु नेने अनुचु करुणापीटमु नेने अनुचु प्राणमिडितिरी करुणनुचुपी प्राणमिडितिरी करुणनुचुपी फलिपीटमुनु चेयुमण्टिर फलिपीटमुनु चेयुमण्टिर फलिपीटमुना सिलुवे अनुचु फलिपीटमुना सिलुवे अनुचु फलियतिरी मी रत्तमुकाची फलियतिरी मी रत्तमुकाची मुखिंचितिनी मी पनिनंततितु मुखिंचितिनी मी पनिनंततितु महिमयोगणता मी के गल्गुण महिमयोगणता मी के गल्गुण नावन्युनु मी कीचितिनी नावन्युनु नावन्यु नु मीकी छितिनी नीवन्यु नु नावे प्रभुव नीवन्यु नु नावे प्रभुव कृपजुपि तिरी मी माहो प्रेमन कृपजुपि तिरी मी माहो प्रेमन परिशुत मंदिरमु नाकु परिशुत मंदिरमु नाकु परिशुत पट्टनमु नंदु परिशुत पट्टनमु नंदु निवास स्थलमु नाकु सगिति निवास स्थलमु नाकु सगितिरी तरतरमु लुमी तो निवसिंतु तरतरमु लुमी तो निवसिंतु परिशुत मंदिरमु नाकु परिशुत मंदिरमु नाकु निर्मिंचा मण्टीरी प्रभुआ निर्मिंचा मण्टीरी प्रभुआ इश्रायेलु निवास मोकटी एरपरचा मण्टीरी प्रभुआ इश्रायेलु निवास मोकटी एरपरचा मण्टीरी प्रभुआ परिशुत मंदिरमु नाकु परिशुत मंदिरमु नाकु
We will sing song number seven Part sankya, eedu This, this part is my theme verse, kada? It is a theme song laaga Then, this year, I will give rewards for this year Read it, if you like this part, please write it down Song number seven Hindi me 542
जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जय इंचु वारे स्वास्थ्य उन्देदरु जय इंचु वारे स्वास्थ्य उन्देदरु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयवंतुले दयवा परदेसु नुन्ना जयवंतुले दयवा परदेसु नुन्ना जीव उक्षफल मुनु बुद्धियंतुरु जीव उक्षफल मुनु बुद्धियंतुरु रैंडव मरणामुलु काटेदरु रैंडव मरणामुलु काटेदरु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु मरुगैन मन्नानिच्छि मरितल्लराति निच्छु मरुगैन मन्नानिच्छि मरितल्लराति निच्छु आराति मीदा प्रोत्ता पेरुंदु आराति मीदा प्रोत्ता पेरुंदु एरिगेदरु तानी उन्दु वारले एरिगेदरु वारे उन्दु वारले जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु
Kaka ketti varadu
एवरुवंतामु वरुकु दिरमुगण निर्चेदरु एवरुवंतामु वरुकु दिरमुगण निर्चेदरु एलेदरु चन्नु वर्धिकारुलै एलेदरु चन्नु वर्धिकारुलै किनु पदंगामु तोकरी पालिंचेदरु किनु पदंगामु तोकरी पालिंचेदरु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु तवलवस्रमुलानु तरीपचयु वारीकी तवलवस्रमुलानु तरीपचयु वारीकी जीव ग्रंधमु ना पेरु तुडुअबड़दु जीव ग्रंधमु ना पेरु तुडुअबड़दु देवदु तलायुद्धा कनतकल्गु देवदु तलायुद्धा कनतकल्गु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु आलय संपमुगम वारीनु देवुडु आलय संपमुगम वारीनु देवुडु निलिपिसिरा परची दीविंचु निलिपिसिरा परची दीविंचु गोतन यर्षाले मनी कायवारी पैनी गोतन यर्षाले मनी कायवारी पैनी जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु वारीनु देवुडु सेमासनानु पम्मिका वारीनु देवुडु सेमासनामु पैनम पूछुंड वित्ती चीवा पगुतमिचु पूछुंड वित्ती चीवा पगुतमिचु पारसुलै नित्यमुगा जीविंतु पारसुलै नित्यमुगा जीविंतु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जय इंचु वारे स्वास्थ्य उन्देदरु जय इंचु वारे स्वास्थ्य उन्देदरु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु जयमु पोंदु मन्नी ये सुचेप्पेलु
We will play the song number six Modicharnamु, aiducharnamु, matramvarudh This is also my theme song Song number six Hindi me 499 Read it, if you like this Get it, vikkar varala
स्वास्थ्यमुगा निच्छि तिवी जय इंचेडु वाणी कन्नी स्वास्थ्यमुगा निच्छि तिवी जय इंचेडु वाणी कन्नी नीवे माकुद उडवैयुन्नावु नीवे माकुद उडवैयुन्नावु मेमु नीदु पुत्रुलमै तित्तीमी मेमु नीदु पुत्रुलमै तित्तीमी नी स्वंतरक्ता मुनिच्छे ओन्नावु गानु तुगा नी स्वंतरक्ता मुनिच्छे ओन्नावु नी सोतुगा स्वास्थ्यमुगा निच्छि तिवी जय इंचेडु वाणी कन्नी स्वास्थ्यमुगा निच्छि तिवी जय इंचेडु वाणी कन्नी
Chivari varich
नी शासनमुलु हुदयानंदमुलु नी शासनमुलु हुदयानंदमुलु अवियन्नी माकु नित्याले स्वास्थ्यमुगम अवियन्नी माकु नित्या स्वास्थ्यमुगम भाविंचि निलच्छे युन्नामु हलेलु या गीतमुलातो भाविंचि निलच्छे युन्नामु हलेलु या गीतमुलातो स्वास्थ्यमुगा निच्छि तिवी जय इंचेडु वाणी कन्नी स्वास्थ्यमुगा निच्छि तिवी जय इंचेडु वाणी कन्नी
This is the song book It is on my sheet And, but, I will tell you Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha, 713 In the new songbook, 713 My new songbook, 713 Modicharnalu, chivari charnalu First two verses last
Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam पापम्बुचेता पडिचडिनाममु करुणेंचि रक्षिंचि तिवी पापम्बुचेता पडिचडिनाममु करुणेंचि रक्षिंचि तिवी रूदग्नताचे हुदयामु निंदे सुतेंतुमो Ma Prabha रूदग्नताचे हुदयामु निंदे सुतेंतुमो Ma Prabha Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam नीति अलेनी मानीचा प्रतकुल नी अंदस्तिरमायेलु नीति अलेनी मानीचा प्रतकुल नी अंदस्तिरमायेलु हुदेंचे मापय नीति सूर्युंदु हुदमार प्रणुतुंदु हुदेंचे मापय नीति सूर्युंदु हुदमार प्रणुतुंदु Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam
Arocharanam
कृष्टेशु प्रबुलो प्रतिस्थालमंदु विजयो तसामु तमंबु कृष्टेशु प्रबुलो प्रतिस्थालमंदु विजयो तसामु तमंबु ऊरेकि चुचु महिमानु चुन्ना देवा ऊरेकि चुचु महिमानु चुन्ना देवा Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam सरिपूर्ण कृपतो नी विश्वासयतनु कनपरचु कोण्ति विनीवो परिशुत कृपतो नी विश्वासयतनु कनपरचु कोण्ति विनीवो विरुवा बडिनाममु विवाहितगाजेस्ते हलेलु या पारेदमु विरुवा बडिनाममु विवाहितगाजेस्ते हलेलु या पारेदमु Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam Jaya Shiluvadavag Oh Ma Prabha Jaya Gita Mulpaaredam
We will play it first First line, boys, etc. We will stand up and sing the Bible chorus During that time, come in front, arrange yourself in lines Especially, boys who are on the right hand side, please come into the main Main panel Please play it
The grand old book, the grand old book You find the words of comfort wherever you may look In sword of war and pain, his promises are plain So keep on believing in the So keep on believing in the grand old book. Asreshthambakrantamulo, e choota chuchina, adharanayunnadi. Sukhadukamulo, bhagdhanamunnadi. Visvasabunchiyya ninchuri. Children, you can come and sit here also. Then there will be space for others.
Pillalu ittu vayipu chunti, baavundandi. Taravathu chevantu, valaki venakka sthalamundu.
Others can kindly occupy these empty spaces and also you can come forward.
Meekinatuvanti varu mundukarandi, me mundu natuvanti kaali sthalal. Meeru akramichkavani koortuntuna.
Sisters, kindly, kindly, come this side.
Friend, mundukarandi, me mundu kaali.
Come up to here.
Mundukarikku chod.
We praise God for the few days meetings we could have. I am overwhelmed by the love and fellowship. Love and hospitality shivered upon me and we enjoyed the fellowship very much.
E kuddidi naalu, yeprathake manituvanti koodikal kaligunthu tanikey. Devu chupinchilatuvanti krupanbattu devanikvandana sthal chelistuntuna. Antegaakunda, meeru maapattla chupinatuvanti prema, athidhyani battu gada. Anenentosantoshistuntuna.
Uh, for the sake of those who might not have come yesterday or could not come yesterday and they were yesterday morning. I'll just give a small gist.
Ninnatuvanti, maru yemunnatuvanti, yavarete ralakpa yaro. Varu koraku, ninnamunna chepinatuvanti, konni vaakkiyali sankshiptanga tilijasta.
Uh, we are meditating on the theme from Revelation chapter twenty one and verse seven.
Manam, mukki amshamu, prakatana yarvayvakatini adharanga jaskund dyananjastu na.
So kindly turn with me to Revelation chapter twenty one, verse seven and shall we read all together.
Dai chesnathu kodachuandi, prakatana yarvayvakata vadhyayam. Yedu ochnumandram kalisi chodukundam. Jayinchuvaadu vittini swatantrinchukununu. Neenathaniki devu naayundunu, athadu nakku kumaru naayundunu.
So shall we pray, then we will continue.
Pradhanjaskunikun sagiddam.
Heavenly Father, eternal God, we are, we do not know how to thank you for the love. And hospitality shivered upon us even as we came with all our, uh, all our limitations and weaknesses in the body because of old age.
Prema galigintandi, nitthudene natuvanti deva. Meemuu pruddaapimalavunna patikoda, innu balahinalthi karkochna patikoda. Maapattla chupinchibandituvanti, prema, athidhyani battu, meekvandanaal, isthotral chelistuntuna.
Now dear Lord, we thank you for the privilege granted to me to give God's word during the last few days.
Prema galigintandi, e kunnidi naalu, vaakkiyani panchkotani, meeru naapchupinchituvanti, krupanbattu, sahayani battu, meekvandanaal chelistuntuna.
Lord, we have come to the last day.
Pravayi yekka chivar dinan kochintuna.
And last meeting will be today evening.
Pravayi roju saayinkalam chivari koodikin kaligunthuna.
Lord, we would like to finish it early this morning so that people could go and come back in good time.
Tiroj vadaikalam pravathvaraga muginchkuni, var thirigivelli marla sakala, niksaayinkal raavalan koortuntuna.
As it has been continuously announced, pray that all may come by six thirty so that we could spend some time in worship.
Pravane eksaarlu prakatinchinatlu ga, andaru koda, aarun narke ochi, konta samyam aaradinchitani, meeku sahayamanukran.
We thank you for the wonderful work which has been wrought in this place by the grace of God.
Pravainituvanti, yesu kriestu variyaka krupadu vara, e sthalamalo, meeru jariginchituvanti, abhutha kariyalan battu, meekvandanaal.
We pray that all, even as we could complete, um, twenty-five years and enter into the twenty-sixth year. Pray that we may prosper with new determination and pray that in the next twenty-five years, the Lord will do great and mighty things.
Pravagadichinatuvanti, yarvayidu samachralalu, meeru chesnatuvanti kariyalan nitthunbatti, meekvandanaal isthotral chelistuntuna. Adesamyalu pravah, raavoyatuvanti, yarvayidu samachralu korakai, motanamayatuvanti, thirmanalthu munduksaagnatlu ga, meeku krupa, sahayani koorkuntuna.
Thank you for thy servant, brother Paul Green and his coworkers. Father, thank you for each one of them.
Pravasavadu Paul Green, garavatantokunatuvanti, saapani varandhanibatti, prati vakkanibatti, meekvandanaal chelistuntuna.
Thank you, they are all working together to redound unto the glory of the Lord in thy house.
Pravameyokkintilo, varandaru kalisi, aikyathu, meekamahimadamay panjastuntunar.
Now dear Lord, we thank you for this three days. We have come to the final day. We pray especially for the evening meeting, pray that thou may bring many more people in the evening.
Pravayokka moodidi naalu, koodikal battu, meekvandanaal naaina, yichivari koodikochintuna, mukkenga, saayinkal, koodikoraku pradhanjastunam, inkanae kmandi ochinatlu, meeku sahayamanukran.
Now also thank you for thy people who came in good number this morning. And we pray that, we pray for those who are on the way, pray that they will kick in their steps that they may come in good time.
Pravayi roju vadaikalam koda chalamandu ochyar, varandhanibatti, meekvandanaal, inkaya yavarete, margamadhimlo untnaroh, varu yekka adugunnu, meeru thvaraparchi, ma madhimlo, nikthiskravani pradhistuna.
Pray that thy presence may be there in a very precious way.
Pravainituvanti, dhanaamalo, meekasandhi ma madhim undunugaaka.
We bind all powers of darkness in the name of Jesus Christ.
Pravainituvanti, yesu kriestu varnamalo, pratyandakar shaktini bandhistuna.
And we claim victory and by faith we stand on the victory stand along with Lord Jesus Christ, the resurrected Savior and pray this prayer in Jesus Christ's precious name.
Yesu kriestu varupunradhanade, natlu ga, pravainituvanti, jayinchinatlu ga, aynu to kalisi, vijay bhoommedham, meemunilubadi, pravainituvanti, yesu kriestu variyaka namalo, pradhinchivedukunchunam, thanri, amen.
Coming back to the theme, he that overcomeeth shall inherit all things.
Yekka mukki vaakkiyani manukchodukundam, jayinchuvaadu vittini swatantrinchukununu.
So the first part of this verse has two important words. One is overcoming, the other is inherit.
Indhalo rendu bagaluntuna, yevakkyamalo, vakati, jayinchuvaadu, rendavu maata swatantrinchukunata.
And inherit all things.
Annitini swatantrinchukunata.
So last two days, we have been trying to understand what is overcoming.
Gadichinatuvanti, rendu di naalu, asal jayinchitante, entonnerchkuntu ocham.
And we, uh, we have some enemies.
Manaki konta mandi chettru luntuna.
The one is Satan, the other is world, the other is self or flesh.
Vakati, satanudu, rendavu, lokam, mudavu, shereeram.
And we have to overcome these enemies.
Yekka chettru lano, manam jayinchal.
We find that the Lord Jesus Christ overcame the world.
Pravainituvanti, yesu kriestu varu lokani jayinchinatlu ga, manam nerchkunam.
He overcame Satan.
Aynu satanu koda jayinchal.
And he didn't have to overcome himself because there was no sin in that flesh.
Ayni yekka shereeramalo, paapamulani karanani batti, athadu swayani jayinchal, snipunthu, ausram lekkundapunthi.
But God has given us clues as to how we can overcome Satan, we can overcome world, we can overcome the self.
Manam yekka lokani, satanani, swayani, yala, jayinchalo, daanikorakai, devu konni clues, manaki, suchandichal.
That is what we were discussing last two days.
Gadichinatuvanti, rendu di naalu, yekka vishyalu, meenamu dyanistucha.
Now today, we are going to study about the rewards.
E roju manamu, devuichetuvanti, bahumanalgu, grinch dyaninchubhotuna.
So what are the rewards the Lord is going to give?
Devuichetuvanti, bahumanalu, yamiti.
Or what are we going to inherit and what are these all things?
Hey leka, emarok maatla chappalant, manam swatantrinchukunabo, yati, yamiti, annitini swatantrinchkunte, ani ante, yenti.
So that is what we are going to discuss.
Idi, manam dyananchivhotuna.
Now Peter, one of the disciples of Jesus, asked him, asked Jesus a very important question.
Pravainituvanti, yesu kriestu var shishul, okkade natuvanti, peethuru, yekka pramukkima, natuvanti, prashnani, yesu kriestu var nadigay.
What he asked was.
Aynadigindante.
Behold, we have forsaken all and followed thee, what shall we have therefore?
E manadante, pravah, meemuu samasthamanu vidichpetti, meemal vembadincham, kada, maakayem durukutundian nadigay.
That is what he asked.
Aa prashnani peethu nadigay.
We have forsaken everything and we are following you.
Meemuu samasthamanu vidichpetti, meemal vembadistuna.
What we will get?
Maakayem durukutundi, idinik.
So Jesus answered that.
Yesu kriestu var, a prashnagi jawavichal.
And he said, you will, you will be rewarded in this world and you will be rewarded in the world to come.
Meeku yekka lokamalo, koda bahumanam durukutundi, antegaakunda, raavoyal, lokamalo, koda bahumanam durukut.
Um, we will be reading that verses later.
Yekka vachinal, manam taravathu chodukundam.
Now I want to say, uh, two things. One is about our salvation, the other is about rewards.
Neenu, rendu vishyalu, grinch, meek chappalneshupaduthuna, mothati, meekavadunatuvanti, rakshana, rendavu, meekavadi, yuvayatuvanti, bahumanal.
Now salvation, we are getting as a gift from God.
Yekka rakshana, devu niyodanundi, manaki bahuma, manaki varamuka yuvaduthundi.
Uh, kindly turn with me to Ephesians chapter two and verse eight.
Dai chesnathu kodachuandi, Ephesialukrasanpatrika, rendava dyayam, yinvidavachna.
Uh, read it.
Meeru visvasamadvara, krupachathane rakshimpavadiyunaru, idi meevanakaligina dika.
Uh, it is not because of you.
Idi meevanakaligindika, idi devu niyarama.
Uh, this is the gift of God.
Idi devu niyekka varam.
Uh, so salvation is giving us without doing anything.
Yekka vadi, yekka rakshana, manam yeh pani chayukunda, manam yuvaduthundi.
Now why I am saying is, why, why I am highlighting it is.
Neenenduki yekka maatna, vakkanichuukunandante.
In some other religious thoughts.
Konni yekka mataparama, natuvanti, aalochunalo.
Uh, they, they have to work out their salvation, that is, they have to labor for their salvation.
Varu muktini rakshannu pondatanikey, varu konni manchi panulu chesi sampaadinchkavali.
So whether they get salvation or not, whether they get forgiveness of sin or not, whether they will go to heaven or not, that we don't know. But the teaching is, they have to work for it, you have to do so many things.
Varu bodinchidantante, nijenga varu parlokam durukutunda, paapakshama, apana, durukutunda, rakshana durukutunda, taravasangati, avipondalantaye, varu bodinchidantante, neekastapadi, manchi panulu jayal.
But Lord Jesus gives salvation free.
Aite, pravainituvanti, yesu kriestu var, yekka rakshana, ni uchithanga istha.
Now I want to tell you one thing.
Meeku yekka vishyani chappalneshupaduthu.
Some people think salvation is very cheap.
Konta mandi, yavankuntarante, yekka rakshana, idi chala chauka varu, antam.
Uh, he is giving free.
Endukantaye, andike uchithanga istunad.
Now listen, if you think like that or if you think in those lines, I want to tell you one thing.
Yekka vela, meeru koda alage, anukuntu, unti, meeku yekka maata chappalneshupaduthuna.
God gives salvation free, not because it is, uh, it is cheap.
Devu rakshana chauka kabatti, meeku uchithanga yuvatledu.
But it is so costly that you cannot gain it.
Adi anto viluvayindi, daan meeru, sampaadinchkolier kabatti, uchithanga istunad.
Now I'll tell you one thing.
Meeku yekka vishyani chaptan.
You are all breathing now.
Meeru.
Breathing oxygen.
Andaru swasa billchkuntuna, oxygen.
Now are you paying for it?
Daaniki, meeravana, valajalistunara.
From the day you are born till the day you are dying, you are going on taking oxygen.
Meeru puttinarozu, nunchi, chani poyen, tennam varu koda, oxygen nikthiskuntu untar.
But suppose you are admitted in the hospital and you need oxygen, they will bring a oxygen cylinder and connect it.
Yekka vela, ganak meek oxygen ausram, ete hospital admitaina, paru, varu cylinder nikthiskostar.
For every hour, you have to pay for it.
Prati ghantaki, meerinta jellinchar.
Now, we know during the Corona days, how much we are struggling to get oxygen.
Aite, Corona time, la, double china, koda oxygen dorakana, natuvanti.
Many people died because they couldn't get oxygen.
Ante kmandi, koda oxygen dorakaka chani poyen.
We were, people were willing to pay very heavy price and get oxygen.
Konta mandi, aite, anta dabba, yena chelistam, oxygen durukutanakoda, varu dorakale.
Uh, so that shows how costly.
Kabatti, yekka oxygen, anta viluvayindo.
Oxygen is. But God has given it free.
Aite, devu di oxygen, manandarki, uchithanga ichal.
Why? If you have to pay for it, who can pay for oxygen?
Yekka vela, roju billchkuni, oxygen, double jellincharante, yavarejellinchar.
It's okay, you pay when you are having Corona and you are admitted in the hospital or you are having some lung infection and you have to be admitted and oxygen is given for few days. Uh, so that your life is saved.
Yekka vela, meeru hospital admitai, Corona ochi, oxygen ausram, lunglo infection unti, oxygen kosam, valajalistuntu, saray, gani, roju chellincharant, etla kuduruthu.
So God has given the oxygen in the air free for you, free for us, so that we can all enjoy it, we can have life.
Kabatti, yekka ali loni, oxygen nunchi, manam jiyam kaligundunatlu ga, devu di oxygen, uchithanga, manamandarki ichal.
Similarly water.
Alage, neelu koda.
How do we get water?
Neelu ela ostavunai.
Of course, you have to pay for this, this water.
Yekka bottle, neelakaitu.
Because it is, you know, purified and all and bottled and all that.
Endukantante, varu, purify jesman, kichar, kabatti, bottle lo beti.
But we are getting water freely from, when there is rain, pour, the water pours from heaven.
Chodandi, varsham bannapudu, aakashamundi, daraga varsham kuripinchabadhu.
And that comes to the rivers and it comes and then it comes to us.
Akurisnatuvanti, varshamunadalu, nundi, par, yemana, yedda koshtu, undi.
Uh, you can collect any amount of water from the rain.
Yekka varshamundi, meek, yekka neelu kavantante, samakurichko.
You have to pray for it.
Daaniki, meeravana, dabbivala?
No.
Ausram le.
If you have to pay for it, how much you will pray?
Yekka vela, ganak, dabbay jellinchar.
So God has given rain to all free because you can't afford.
Meeru valach jellincharer, kabatti, varshaani, devu, andarki uchithanga istunad.
In the same way, salvation is not cheap, but salvation is so costly that you can't afford it, so God gives it as a gift.
Alage, rakshana koda anto viluvayinadi, meeru daanikonukkolier kabatti, devu uchithanga istunad.
So don't think it is very cheap.
Kabatti, rakshana, idi chauka, anukwakandi.
It is so costly that God is giving us free of charge.
Adi anto viluvayinadi, kabatti, devu uchithanga istunad.
But if you have to get rewards in heaven.
Meeku parlokamandu, bahumanal, ganak kavala.
It is not given free, you have to work for it.
Avi meeku uchithamuka, yuvavadavu, vaatikoraku, meeru prayasapadak.
So the rewards has to be earned, that means you have to work for it.
Yekka bahumanal, meeru sampaadinchkavali, ante vaatikoraku, pani chayal.
Uh, we need to work for it and we are created unto good works. Ephesians chapter two and verse ten.
Ephesialukrasanpatrika, rendava dyayam, padavachna, chappanatuga, satkriyalu chaitukorakai, manam nirminshabaddam.
Ephesians chapter two, verse ten.
Ephesialukrasanpatrika, rendava dyayam, padavachna. Maru yekka vaat, yendu, manam nadchukunavani, devu munduga, assida prachina, satkriyalu chaitukai, manam kriestu yesunandu, srishchimpa badina varamai.
We are created in Jesus Christ to do satkriya, good works.
Manam satkriyalu chaitukorakai, kriestu yesunandu, srishchimpa badam.
And we are judged, uh, we are judged for our rewards according to our works.
Kabatti, manam chesnatuvanti, panulannabatti, manam thirputi achabadi, manak bahumanal yuvadthai.
Uh, that is what the word of God says.
Idi devu niyekka vaakkiyam bodistundu.
Uh, we will be reading several verses later.
Ante kuminituvachi naalu, manam taravathu chodukundam.
And the rewards are really very great.
Yekka bahumanalu, nijamuga, chala gopavi.
Uh, I want you to read two verses.
Rendu vachna, meeru chadavalan koortununa.
One is Romans chapter eight and verse eighteen.
Modit vachnam, Roma patrika, yinvidavadyayam, padinvidavachna.
Yes.
Roma yinvidi, padinvidi, andrang kalischodukundam, manaedala, prateksham kaavu, mahimayudita, ippati, kalaku, shramalu, yenna daginavika, vani, yenchuchununa.
Uh, it is so great that it cannot be compared to anything, the suffering which we pass through in the present time.
Kabatti, devuichetuvanti, mahimanka, polchushte, ippu, manavilayatuvanti, shramalu, yenna daginavika.
And second Corinthians chapter four, verse seventeen and eighteen.
Taravathu, rendava Korinti patrika, nalgava dyayam, padiyedu, padinvidavachna, kalischodukundam.
Second Corinthians, chapter two, uh, chapter four and verse seventeen and eighteen.
Rendava Korinti, nalgava dyayam, padiyedu, padinvidi, vachna. Meemuu drishmaynavatini chodaka, adhrishmaynavatini, nidaninchuchunam, ganuka, kshana maatrma, munduma, chulakani shrama, ma koraku, anta kanta, ku, yekku, vaina, nityamayana, mahima, bhaaramu, kalgujachunadi, yala, yenaka, drishmayne, vanityamalu, adhrishmayne, vi, nityamalu.
Uh, verse seventeen, uh, our light affliction, that is our affliction. You know, we pass through many, many problems in life, that is affliction, which is but for a moment.
Kabatti, yekka manu jyothole, vellatuvanti, aya, shramalni, ikkade, antunadante, chulakani shrama, maru yekka kshana maatrma, undundu.
Uh, that is, we suffer maybe for few years.
Ante, yekka shrama, konni samachralundu.
But the eternal glory which we are getting. But the eternal glory which we are getting,
हाईते मनमु पोंदपोये एट्वांटी नित्य महिमाहिते?
That is for eternity.
अदि नित्यत्तम उंतुंदी।
So, what is a few years compared to eternity, it is nothing, it is only for a moment.
चोरण्डी हाईते इप्पुर योक़ कोत्ती कालक श्रमलने गनक नित्यत्तम पोलिस्ते, इदोक़ क्षणमात्रमे?
Ah, it works for us far more exceeding an external weight of glory.
माकोरकु अंतकंतकु यक्कुवगा, नित्यमयन महिमा भारमुनु कलुगजायचुनदी।
Ah, so we will be, while we look not for the things which are seen, but the things which are not seen, for the things which are seen are temporal, but the things which are seen are eternal.
दृश्यमयन वी नित्यमुलु, अदृश्यमयन वी नित्यमुलु काबट्टी, मेमु दृश्यमयन वाटिने चोडका, अदृश्यमयन वाटिने निदानिंच चुचुनाम।
So, what is written about the glory?
काबट्टी योक़ महिमा कुरिंच एमन जप्तुनार?
Far more exceeding an external weight of glory.
अंतकंतकु यक्कुवगा नित्यमयन महिमा भारमंतुनार?
So, in terms of time, it is a moment, the suffering is for a moment, but the glory is for eternity.
काबट्टी कालानी बट्टी गनक चूसते, मनयोक़ श्रमलु क्षणमात्रम उंटाय, महिमाहिते नित्यत्तम उंतुंदी।
In terms of the intensity of suffering, it is a light affliction which we are passing through.
यी ओक़ श्रमयोक़ तेव्रतन गनक चूसते, आश्रमनी चोलकनी श्रमा अंतुनार?
But it will bring exceeding and eternal weight of glory.
हाईते महिमा कुरिंची, अदि नित्यमयन्दी मरि यो भारमयन्दी अंतुनार?
Ah, that is what God is giving to us.
इबी देवुरु मनके योवोतुनार?
Now, what are heavenly rewards?
हाईते इप्पुर परलोकपु बहुमानमुल एमिटी?
Ah, one, it is a possession.
मोततीती, अदि स्थाई लेका अंतस्त।
That means we will get a possession.
देवुरु मनक स्थाईलु अंतस्तलु उंचबोतुनार?
Then, we will get power.
तरवात मनक अधिकारम योवोतुनार?
And it is a possession, that means you will possess so many things.
नेव अनेकमण्डी वाटिनी स्वतंत्रिंचको बोतुनाव?
Ah, then it is a privilege.
अंतेगा कुणा, अदि आधिक्यत कोडा।
Ah, so, this is the rewards.
इबी देवुरु योवोय एट्वांटी बहुमानाल।
Ah, what does the Bible say about these rewards?
यी ओक़ बहुमानाल कुरिंच बाइबल एमन बोधिस्तुंदी?
Now, turn with me to Matthew chapter 16, verse 27.
चोरण्डी नातो कोडा, मत्ताय स्वर्था पदहारो अध्यायम, इरवाय एडो वच्चन चोरण्डी।
This is told by Jesus.
यी ओक़ माटा येसु कृष्ट प्रवार चप्पे।
Ah, Matthew chapter 16, verse 27.
मत्ताय स्वर्था पदहारो अध्यायम, इरवाय एडो वच्चन, अंदर कलिच चोदूकुंदा। मनुष्य कुमाडु तनतन्री महिमा गलवाडे, तनतोतलतो कोडा राबो उच्चनाडु, अप्पुरायना यवनी क्रियल चोपुना, वानिकी फलम इच्छुनो।
So, the two truths come out of it.
यी वच्चनुलु नुंची रेंडु सत्यालुंतुनाय?
Ah, the one truth is repeated again and again in the subsequent verses which we are going to read.
तरवात मच्चनालो वक्का सत्यमु तिरीकी तिरीकी चप्पवर्तुंदी, मनतरव चूसकुंदा।
Here we find when he is going to reward us.
इकड़ा आयनी यप्पुर मनके बहुमान योवोतुनाडो चप्पवर्तिन्।
Ah, when he will reward us?
यप्पुर आयन मनक बहुमानालिस्तर?
When does Lord Jesus Christ shall come in glory.
येसु कृष्ट प्रवारु, तन महिमातो वच्चिनपुडु।
Ah, glory, with his angels he will appear, then only he will give us reward.
आयना तनतोतलतो कोडा प्रत्यक्षमयनपुडु, महिमलो, अप्पुर तनयोक़ बहुमानाल मनकी स्थात।
Now, he will reward every man.
प्रति मनुष्युनिकी बहुमानमिस्तर।
And he will be rewarding according to his works.
प्रति वानिकी, वानी वानी क्रियल चोपुना बहुमानमिस्तर।
Ah, it is not given free.
यी ओक़ बहुमानाल उचितंगायिवड़।
Like salvation.
रक्षण इच्छनाट्य की।
Salvation is given as a gift.
यी ओक़ रक्षणाहिते वरमुगा योवड़िंदी?
But rewards will be according to our works.
बहुमानाल मात्रम मनयोक़ पनुलनु बट्टी योवड़ताय।
Second Corinthians chapter 5 and verse 10.
चोरण्डी रेंडव कोरिंथी ऐदो अध्यायम, पदो वच्चन।
We must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ, for everyone that may receive the things done in his body according that he has done, whether it is good or bad.
इंदुकंता तानु जरिंचन क्रियल चोपुना, अवि मंचिवायनु सरे, चड्डवायनु सरे, देहमतो जरिंचन वाटिफलमु, प्रति वाडुनु पोंदुनाट्लु, मनम अंदरमु कृष्ट न्यायपीटम युद्दा, प्रत्यक्षमु कावलयुन?
There are seven judgments in the word of God.
देवुनी ओक़ वाक्यमुलो, येडु तीर्पुल चप्पवर्ताय।
Ah, there is a judgment for the unbeliever.
अविश्वासलकु तीर्पु।
Ah, we find, we have, we have taken that verse in one of the studies, so I am not going to take.
मन इप्परवर चेसन ध्यानालो, आयक़ वच्चनालु कुरिंच तुमुंदे ध्यानं जेसन गणपुड़ चोड़।
We all appear before the judgment seat of Christ.
येसु कृष्ट वारी ओक़ न्यायपीटम युद्दा, मनम अंदरमु प्रत्यक्षमु कावलयुन?
All the people who are dead in the air, dead in the sea, all will appear.
वार आकाशमुंद जनिपोयन, समुद्रमु जनिपोयन, यक़्कड़ जनिपोयन, वार अंदर येसु कृष्ट वारी न्यायपीटम युद्दा।
And books will be opened.
अप्पुर ग्रंधामुलु तिप्पवर्ताय?
They will be judged according to what is written in the books.
आयोक़ ग्रंधालु रायवडीनट्लुगा, वारीकी तीर्पु तिर्च्चबर्तुंदी।
And another book is open.
अप्पुरी मरि ओक़ ग्रंधाम तिप्पवर्तुंदी?
That is the Book of Life.
अदि जियो ग्रंधाम।
If your name is not in the Book of Life,
मी ओक़ पेरु गनक जियो ग्रंधाम मंदु कनिकिचकोपते?
You will be put in the lake of fire.
नी अद्निगंद कालतो मंडु गुंडमुलो पड़वे बर्त।
We find in Revelation chapter 20, verse 11 onwards.
यी ओक़ विष्णालु, प्रकटना इरवाय अध्यायम, पदकुंडा वच्चनुंची मनक कनिपिस्त।
Ah, that is one judgment, judgment of the unbeliever of sinners.
अदि अविश्वासलकु तिर्च्चबर्तिन्, पापुलकु तिर्च्चबर्तिन्, तीर्पु, मोतती तीर्पु।
Ah, then there is a judgment for the believers, that is what we are talking.
तरवात विश्वासलकु कोडा तीर्पु तिर्च्चबर्तुंदी, दानी कुरिंच इप्पुर माट्लार्तुनार?
Then, then other judgments are there, I am not going to talk about it now.
तरवात मिकिलेट्वांटी तीर्पुल कोडा उंतुनाय, वाटिकुरिंच इप्पुर मनक।
One judgment is, which we are all familiar, that is, we judge ourselves during the breaking of the brain.
वक्का तीर्पु एंटेन्टे, मनक मनमे तीर्पु तीर्च्चुकुन मनक चप्पवर्तिन्डी वच्चन, तीर्पु, अदि प्रवु बाला समयलु मनक चेस्तुनार?
We are asked to judge yourself.
निन्नु नेव तीर्पु तीर्च्चुकुन मनक चप्पवर्ताम?
I judge myself whether I am worthy.
नेनु योग्युन्ना कादन, ननु नेन्टीर्पु तीर्च्चुकुंदा?
Ah, so, there are many times, many judgments are there.
इविदंगा अनेकमण्डी वच्चन, तीर्पु देवुनी ओक़ वाक्यमुलो गनिपिस्ताय?
But this particular judgment which we are talking now is for the believers.
हाईते इप्पुर मनमु माट्लार्डेट्वांटी यी ओक़ प्रत्येकमयन्डी वच्चन, तीर्पु, अदि विश्वासलु उद्देशिंचनाट्य वच्चन?
That is not to send us to hell or send us to damnation.
यी ओक़ तीर्पु मनल्नी, नारकमुलोको लेखो शिक्षा, विदिम्प बट्टानी पम्पिंच्चानी काद।
But that judgment is to decide what rewards should be given unto you.
नीकु ये ये बहुमानाल योवालो, अनी तैलच्चानिकी यी ओक़ तीर्पु तिर्च्चबर्तुंदी।
You know, it is like the judges who judge in a competition.
चोरण्डी, येदेना पोटीलो, पोटी बेटिनपुडु, पार्टिस्पेंसीकी तीर्पु तिर्च्चानिकी इविदंगा जज्जे कुच्च।
Ah, now in your schools, colleges and we have got these sports.
चोरण्डी, यी ओक़ स्कूल्सलो, कॉलेजेसलो कोडा क्रियाल जरुताय?
Ah, and there is singing competition, elocution competition, you know such competitions.
यक़्कड़ा पाटल, पाटल पोटी तरवात उपन्यासम पोटी एन्नी उंटाय?
Ah, none of them are punished if they don't do well.
वकवेला एवरेना सरीका पाड़कपोते, वालकेम पटुकुन शिक्षण।
But all will not get the medal.
हाईते एंटेन्ट, अंदरिकी मेडल।
One will get a gold medal, one will get a silver medal, one may get a bronze medal, others won't get anything.
वकनिक बंगार पत्कम दुरुतुंदा, वकनिक वेंडी पत्तम दुरुतुंदा, वकनिक असला, वकवेल उंते दुरुतुंदा, लाव देवुरु दुरक।
This is like that, this judgment of the believer, she is like that.
काबट्टी विश्वासलकु तिर्च्चबर्तिन्, तीर्पु, अलांटी तीर्पु?
Ah, what, what God is judging is, what are your works as a believer?
वक्का विश्वासिगा, नेव चेसनेट्वांटी क्रियल एंटी ने देवुरु आतीर्पुलो परीक्षिस्त।
Remember, God wants you to possess all things, inherit all things.
नापकम बेटुकुंदी, मीरु समस्तमुनु स्वतंत्रिंचकोवल्लनी, देवुरु कोरिकलिगिनार?
So, it is up to you.
हाईते इदि मीस्त।
If you work for it, you will get it.
मीर वाटिकोरकु प्रयासपड़ते वाटिनी पोंदत।
God is not a respecter of persons.
देवुरु ये मनुष्युन्नी कोडा, आयना गनपर्चेट्वांटी वाटिनी।
That is respecter of person, that is, he will not do partiality.
आयन अलांटी पक्षपातुन जुपिंचेट्वांटी वाटित।
Ah, he is a righteous judge.
आयना नीति मंतुडेनेट्वांटी न्यायाधिपति।
Oh, there is a verse in Isaiah chapter 11, I think.
यश्या पत्कुंडा अध्यायमलो माटुंदी।
Ah, there it says, the Lord is the righteous judge and he will judge righteously.
योहोवा नीति मंतुडु, आयन तन नीतिनु बट्टी तीर्पु तीर्चुनं चप्पवर्तिन्।
And in Psalm 10 also, there is a verse, the Lord will judge the world righteously.
अलागे केर्तना पदिलो कोडा, योहोवा लोकमुनो, नीतिनु बट्टी तीर्पु तीर्चुनं चप्पवर्तिन्।
So, our Lord will judge righteously.
काबट्टी मना प्रवु, नीतितो तीर्पु तीरुस्त।
And we will be given according to our works.
मनयोक़ क्रियलनु बट्टी मनक बहुमानाल योवड़ताय?
Ah, Revelation chapter 22, verse 12.
चोरण्डी प्रकटना इरवाय रेंडु, पनिंडो वच्चन।
Behold, I come quickly, and my reward is with me to give every man according to his work shall be.
This is what I'm saying, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know, you know.
Ah, first Corinthians chapter three, verse eight.
In the first Corinthians, you know.
A laborer is worthy of his reward.
No.
First Corinthians three, eight.
When you do it, you know, you know, you know, you know.
So if you labor for the Lord.
You know, you know.
He is worthy of his reward.
You know, you know.
And if you read that portion, first Corinthians, chapter three.
In the first Corinthians, you know.
There are so many things written there.
Here, I don't know.
It talks about the quality of your work.
You know, you know.
I hope you know that verses.
You know, you know.
Brother, you can read from verse four onwards.
Receiving a higher credit because it is normal.
We know that people who are not in the style of the Lord, they will go to the church.
Now here, Lord Jesus Christ is standing to receive.
Now, when Jesus Christ is coming, he will go to Stephanie's house.
That is the honor which God gave to the martyr.
If someone is suffering, they will pray for him and die for him as a martyr.
And the Lord will give the same honor to you if you suffer for him and die for him as a martyr.
If you are not in the style of the Lord, he will pray for you.
Thirdly.
What?
Reward for secret prayer.
When people pray secretly, they will pray for them.
Turn with me to Matthew chapter 6 verse 6.
Let us see how we should pray and how we should not pray. How we should pray and how we should not pray.
How we have to pray.
How we should pray.
Read.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for your brother, your sister, and pray secretly. Then, when your brother sees you, he will pray for you.
The Father which seeth in secret shall reward you openly.
When your brother sees you, he will pray for you.
If you read further, you will find there are people who make prayer to show off.
When you pray secretly, you will pray for them.
That was the prayer of the publicans.
They will stand and pray and show that they are very religious. When we pray secretly, we have to pray for them.
They do not get the reward according to Jesus Christ.
When we pray secretly, we will pray for them.
But you get into your room, close the door.
Then, when you pray secretly, you have to pray for your brother. He will pray for you.
He sees you in secret.
Then, he says, "The reward is given to you openly." Then, when your brother sees you, he will pray for you.
There are many people in our assembly also.
There are many people in our assembly.
They make very long worship, long prayers, but in their private life, they don't pray much.
When you pray secretly, you will pray for them.
They will sing one whole hymn, a whole song.
They will sing one whole song.
Show and showing off their vocabulary or knowledge or they will, some people give a message also.
When you pray secretly, you will pray for them.
This is not correct at all.
This is not correct.
You are robbing another person's time.
When you pray secretly, you will pray for them.
You see, suppose you pray five minutes.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for five minutes.
You sing two minutes song, three minutes worship.
You have to pray for two minutes.
You are doing five minutes.
You have to pray for five minutes.
Suppose one hour is allotted.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
And all people are praying and worshiping like that, there are only twelve people who can worship for one hour.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
But suppose you worship for thirty seconds.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for thirty seconds.
On the basis of the word which is given, short worship.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for thirty seconds.
Hundred and twenty people can worship, even in an hour.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
So if you take any time more than thirty seconds, you are robbing your sister's time.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
You go home and worship one hour, who stops you?
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
Go and worship, go and pray.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
So that is why apostle Paul says, "There is no time to talk about it." You have to pray in the spirit, you have to pray with understanding also.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
And at the same time, pray with understanding.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Suppose in a whole day prayer meeting.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for a day.
Or all night prayer.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for a whole night.
Many people will not come.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
Pray for one hour, no problem.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for an hour.
But not in a church prayer where the time is limited.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for a day.
All should get an opportunity to pray.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Anyway, this is what the Bible says, "When we pray in secret, Lord will reward thee openly."
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
And also for those who are praying and fasting.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Matthew chapter 6 verse seventeen eighteen.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
You read.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. Then, when your brother sees you, he will pray for you.
The Father which is in secret unto the Father which is in secret, and thy Father which seeth in secret shall reward thee openly, verse eighteen.
Then, when your brother sees you, he will pray for you.
Don't talk, don't talk children, don't talk. Was it reward for loving the enemies and doing without expecting anything?
When you love your brothers, you have to pray for them.
Luke six thirty-five.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Ah, six thirty-five Luke. But love ye your enemies and do good and lend, hoping nothing again, and your reward shall be great.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you love your brothers, you have to pray for them.
You shall be the children of the highest, for he is kind unto the unthankful and to the evil.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Ah, reward for giving arms.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Giving arms to the poor.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Again, the same principle.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Ah, six one-two, Matthew six one-two. Take heed that you do not give arms before men to be seen of them, otherwise we have no reward of your father which is in heaven.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Burly I say unto you, they have their reward, that is, they do not get reward, they get a negative reward, in other words, verse three.
When thou doest arms, let not thy left hand know what thy right hand doeth, was for that thing, that thy arms may be in secret.
And thy Father which seeth in secret himself shall reward thee openly.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. Then, when your brother sees you, he will pray for you.
Secret prayer, secret fasting and prayer, secretly giving arms.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Or giving arms without expecting anything back.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Then, we get a reward for receiving a righteous man.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
And he gives a reward to us when you receive a prophet in the name that he is a prophet.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Matthew chapter ten verse forty-one forty-two.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Matthew ten forty-one forty-two.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Verse forty-two also. So if you receive a prophet, then you will get the reward of the prophet.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
If you receive a righteous man.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
You understand what you mean by receive, that is, God's servant is coming, a prophet is coming, elder is coming. You receive him, ask him to come, sit, you know, give him a cup of water, maybe tea, maybe what he wants or whatever it is. You know, giving him the honor that he is a servant of God. Then he says, "The blessing or the reward the servant of God will get, or that believer will get, you will get."
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Reward for preaching the gospel.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
First Corinthians chapter nine seventeen and eighteen.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
First Corinthians nine seventeen eighteen. Or if I do these things willingly, I have a reward. But if against my will, a dispensation of the gospel is commented unto me.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Ah, that is, you have to preach the gospel willingly.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Suppose you take it up as a job, job, that is a work. I have to go and distribute under tracks per day, then only I will get my salary.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Not that.
Then?
Apostle says, "Go unto me if I don't preach the gospel."
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
If I do it willingly, I have the reward.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
So we are concentrating on the reward only.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Reward for teaching the word of God and doctrine.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
First Timothy chapter five verse seventeen eighteen.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
There is a reward for the elders who do teaching of the word and doctrine to you.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Verse seventeen.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Ah, they are eligible for double honor.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
This is an earthly reward, I will say, earthly reward. That is, you are an elder, you are a speaker, so you honor me. So, you know, the Bible says he is worthy, so that is an earthly honor.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
So, he will give a reward to us for preaching the gospel and shepherding.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
There is a reward given, offered to Ruths in chapter two and verse twelve.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Full reward for coming under God's wings.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Ruth chapter two and verse twelve.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
The Lord recommends thy work, and a full reward be given thee of thy Lord God of Israel, under whose wings thou art coming.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
Now the time is twelve-ten, we will have a short prayer and we will have ten minutes break. I think tea may be available, drink water or tea or go to washroom or whatever and come back within ten minutes.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
In the next session, we are going to see what are the rewards.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
In the first session, we have seen who is eligible for the reward.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
That is not over, actually there are many more things, if there is time, I will take.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
You pray shortly.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them. When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
So when you hear the song, kindly come upstairs.
When you pray secretly, you have to pray for them.
And...
मी स्थान अन्नी मित्तीस कोण दी प्रार्थना जैस्कुंटम् तरलवंचंडी कोल्लमुस कोण दी प्रार्थना जैस्कुंटम् प्रेमगरत्तंडी पर्षदिद्यवय सेवनालस्तोत्रालु उदेकालम सेशन लो नायन आरक्षणाने दिमा कुच्चितंगा इच्छरणी गणापकंजे स्तोच्चरु नायन आद्यंतो विलवयिंदो माग्रहिम्पलोनिक तिस्क्नोच्चरु अंदर मेत्तमे दान पुंदुकोलेम गणिका नायन आतनी प्रवाहुच्चितंगा इच्छरणी एन्तो स्पष्टंगा मातो माट्लाड्तो चिन्न कोणनालस्तोत्रालु अदेस समयोलो भहुमानालकोरकुम्यम प्रयासपड़ालनी नायन आतनी प्रभा मातो माट्लाड्तो चिरु अंदर बट वन्नालस्तोत्राल तंडी नायन आ भहुमानाल पुंदुकोटानिक यवर अरुहुलो आविष्यान्नी माकैंतो क्षुण्णंगा गणापकंजे स्तोच्चिन्न कोणनालस्तोत्राल चिलिंच्कुण्नाम नायन आतनी प्रवाह तदि परिसेशन लो सेकंड सेशन लो मी दास्सु निनेलबेट कोण दी मिसलो चौट्टमरुपर्स्कोण दी नातो मातो माट्लाड्तु रमणी आयका भहुमानालु गुरिच्छने ट्वेंटी नायन आतनी प्रभा आवगाहना ग्रहिम्पूमा कनक्रिस्तुरं तत्वारा नायन आ जय जीवितानी जीविंची वाटिने माझीवितालो पुंदुकोटानिकी मी नाम महिमात्मय कृपण अनुक्रयस्तु रमणी ममलंदनी मिदायगलास्तमल कप्पकेंच्कुंटु पाटल द्वारा नायन आतनी प्रभा ममले प्रोत्सयिंच्मनी वाक्यं द्वारा दर्शिंच्मनी प्रभुनो रक्षकुडु नायन आ ट्वेंटी एसु कृष्ट्पलुवारी पर्षदमय नामन स्तुतिंची प्रार्थिंची वेडुकुंचु नाम तंड्री
पिवल सिंह सॉन्ग नंबर एट सॉन्ग सीट्स पाटसंकेन्नी मिति पत्तलुन्छी इफ यू डोंट हैव सॉन्ग सीट्स प्लीज रेज़ योर हैंड मी तेगरा सॉन्ग सीट्स लेखुंदे दाइचिस चेले पण दी एरन तचिस्तर मीको सॉन्ग सीट्स पाटसंकेन्नी मिति मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु ई यात्रलो मुंदुकु सागिना तोड़पड़ी ई यात्रलो मुंदुकु सागिना तोड़पड़ी एसुरे नडपुनु मनलनु एसुरे नडपुनु मनलनु तनामार्गमु नंदुना तनामार्गमु नंदुना मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु असिलुआ मार्गमु एन्तो इरुकईनदी असिलुआ मार्गमु एन्तो इरुकईनदी कृष्टुने गुरिगा नुन्छिनाम कृष्टुने गुरिगा नुन्छिनाम विजययु निश्चययु विजययु निश्चययु मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु ईहामंधु स्रमलु रानुन्ना महिमलु ईहामंधु स्रमलु रानुन्ना महिमलु एन्नदा गीनवी कावुगा एन्नदा गीनवी कावुगा कृष्टे दुकमु बापुनु कृष्टे दुकमु बापुनु मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु ई जगतीलो कस्टमल पादलु कलिगिनाम ई जगतीलो कस्टमल पादलु कलिगिनाम दैर्यमु विड्वका युंदुमु दैर्यमु विड्वका युंदुमु जय इन्छे प्रभु ईहमुनु जय इन्छे प्रभु ईहमुनु मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे मनाजीवितमंतयु अनुक्षणमयुद्धमे इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु इदिय सिलुव मार्गमु महिमराजमुंदनु बाइबिल लत्ती बाइबिल पल्ला पड़कुनु लिफ्ट अप बाइबिल सी विल सिंग द बाइबिल कोर्स बले-बले माटा बंगारु माटा बाइबिल लो माटा एसु माटा बले-बले माटा बंगारु माटा बाइबिल लो माटा एसु माटा नाजीवितार नीजीवितान पर्वनी माटा एसु माटा नाजीवितान नीजीवितान पर्वनी माटा एसु माटा बले-बले माटा बंगारु माटा बाइबिल लो माटा एसु माटा बले-बले माटा बंगारु माटा बाइबिल लो माटा एसु माटा
आई अव्योग सम आई प्रॉब्लम आई कैन नॉट सी विथ द आई एंड अलसो दिस आई साइट इस 50% आई कैन नॉट रीड माय बाइबिल थाट्स व्हाय आई एम यूजिंग दिस पेपर्स एंड अलसो मोबाइल फॉरगिव मी
नाकु कण्टी समस्या उन्दी कुडिकन्नु नाकु पूर्तिगा कनपिन्छदु यादम कन्नु याबै शातमात्रम यकनपिस्नु काबट्टी बाइबिल छदवलेनु काबट्टी ई पेपर्सनु तर्वाता मोबाइल लो पेदक्षराल्तो वाकिन्जप्तु
आई अडुकेटिड टाइप्ड इन बिग लेटर्स दिस बाइबिल वर्स ओली
यका पेपरलो देवुन वाक्यालेनु पण नाइ पेदक्षराल्लो मुद्रिंच्छु बढियून्तुनाहि
अन्यवे नाव वी आर गोइंग तू टॉक अबाउट रिवॉर्ड्स
इपुरु मानमो भहुमानाल गुरिंची द्यानिंच्छु बोतून्तुनाम
शल वी अव्यव्यवहार्ड अप्रेह प्रार्थना जैस्कुंटम् हैवली फादर इतर्नल गॉड एवं आज वी डिसकस अबाउट द रिवॉर्ड्स विच इस रिकॉर्डेड इन द वर्ड ऑफ गॉड वी कैन नॉट फुली अंडरस्टैन्ड वी कैन नॉट फुली कॉम्प्रिहेन्ट ऑल व्हाट यू अव्योग केप्ट डियो लोड वी आर ट्राइंग तू डिसेक्ट डिवाइड एंड ट्राइ तू अंडरस्टैन्ड व्हाट आर द रिवॉर्ड्स फादर इट ऑल डिपेंस अबाउन अस बिकॉज़ यू आर गोइंग तू जज अस बाय योर वर्क्स सो इनेबल अस तू डू गुड वर्क्स डियर लोड सो देट वी मै इन्हरिट ऑल थिंस गिव मी अटरेंस वी प्रेय फादर आई सर्वेंड वु ट्रांसलेट्स वी प्रेय इन जिसस क्राइस प्रशियस नेम
अमेय
वी आर गोइंग तू टॉक अबाउट द रिवॉर्ड्स
मानमो भहुमानाल गुरिंची माट्लाड्बोतून्तुनाहि
जेनिसिस चैप्टर 15 एंड वर्स 1
चोरंडी आदिकान्नम पदिहेनवाद्यायम मधति वच्चन
अदेर वी फाइंड द लोड इस अवर रिवॉर्ड
इकड़ा देवुडे प्रव्य मनक भहुमानंगा उन्तुनाहि
आर रीड 15 वन
आदिकान्नम पदिहेनवाकती विजरिकिन तर्वाता यहो वाक्यमु अब्राहमनको दर्शनमंद वच्ची अब्राहमा बैपड़कमु नैनु नीकु केडमु नी भहुमानमु अत्यधिक मगुनानी चेप्पनु
हाँ एक्सीडिंग ग्रेट रिवॉर्ड
अत्यधिक मैनिटु वंटी भहुमानम
सो द ग्रेटेस्ट रिवॉर्ड इस द लोड जिसस क्राइस
अन्नीटु कण्टी अत्यधिक मैनिटु वंटी भहुमानम प्रवयन एसु कृष्ट्वारे
तू हैव हिम तू पसज्जिम तू इन्क्रीस इन द नॉलेज ऑफ गॉड देट इस द ग्रेटेस्ट
आइनु कलिगिन्नटम आइनी स्वतंत्रिंच्छुकौटम आइनी यका ज्ञानमलो यदकटम अनेदी अत्यधिक भहुमानम
सो देट इस व्हाट ही प्रॉमिस्ड तू अब्राहम आई एम दाई एक्सीडिंग ग्रेट रिवॉर्ड
नैने नी अत्यधिक मैन भहुमानमणी देवुड़ा अब्राहमनकु वाक्दानं जिसेड
आई आई वांट तू टेल यू अवर स्मॉल स्टोरी विच ब्रदर वक्सिंग यूज्ड तू रिपीट
सर वक्सिंग आर जिप्पे तुन्तु वक्क चिन्न कदम मीकी चप्पा निष्ठपड्तुन्तुनाहि
यू नो इटर वस अवर किंग वी यूज्ड तू गो फॉर यू नो अटैकिंग अदर किंग्स इन द ओल्डन डेज़ देट वस द ऑर्डर
आतर रोजुलो जरिकिन अट्लुगा वकराजु मिंगिल्नटु वंटी राज्याल मध्यकी दानिक विल्लेवाड
एंड वी विल गो एंड प्लंडर एंड ब्रिंग लॉट ऑफ थिंस
आइन आया राज्याल मध्यकी दंडेत्ती वेली अक्कनुच्छु दोच्कुनी आया उस्तुल तिस्कुन अच्छावाड
एंड देन व्हेन ही रिटर्न्स
आविदंगतर तिरिवच्चन
वी विल डिसिब्बूट द रिवॉर्ड तू ऑल द पीपल
मिंगिल्नटु वंटी मनुष्यलकी आयको भहुमानाल इच्छेट वंटीवाड
बिकॉज़ दे फोट विथ हिम
एन्तु कण्टा आत्ने तो कलिसिवारु
सो वी यूज्ड तू गिव गोल्ड सिल्वर एंड लैंड प्रॉपर्टी एंड ऑल व्हाटएवर दे वांट दे विल गिव
यथामरो पालकुन वार अंदरकी वालक कावल्सनटु कोणतो मंदिक बंगारम कोणतो मंदिक वेंडी कोणतो मंदिक बूम ईविदंग भहुमानाल इच्छावाड
बट वन मैन सेड
आइते वक्क मनुष्य
आई डोंट वांट अन्य ऑफ दिस रिवॉर्ड
मीरिच्छे भहुमानाल नाके एमी वध्दनाहि
बट आई वांट वन थिंग
नाकु वक्क भहुमानंगा वालेन
अलाउ मी तू बी विथ यू
मीतोने उन्ननेवंडी नन्नु अन्नाहि
एंड तू सर्व यू
मीकु परिचरे चेनेवंडी अन्नाहि
सो देन ही सेड यू डोंट वांट अन्य गोल्ड और सिल्वर और लैंड और प्रॉपर्टी ओके यू वांट तू सर्व मी ओके बी विथ मी
राज्यान्नटु नीकु बंगारम वध्द वेंड वध्द बूम वध्द एम वध्द नाके साह्यजन निष्ठपड्तुन नातोने उन्डु अन्नाहि
सो ही वस विथ द किंग
आविदमका यीयका मनुष्य राजुतो उन्नाहि
स्लोली ही बिकेम वेरी पावरफुल
नम्मदिगा चाला बलवंतुडिगा मारिपेन
हाँ ही बिकेम नेक्स्ट तू द किंग
इपुरु राजु तर्वाता थर्डे नेक्स्ट व्यक्तिगा
वन डे सुदन्नली द किंग डाय
वकरोजना अकस्मात्तिगा राज जनिपेन
एंड देन ऑल द पीपल सेड नाव वेयर तू गो फॉर अवर किंग ही डोंट आवे अन्य चिल्ड्रन
इपुरु मिंगिल्ल मनुष्य अंदर यवनाहरंटी राज कुमारुडु लेडुगदा इपुरे जादामन आलोच्चिंच्चर
देन एवरीबॉडी सेड दिस मैन इस देह इस नेक्स्ट तू द किंग ही नोस एवरीथिंग
अपुरु मी अंदर यवनाहरंटे ई व्यक्तुनाहि गदा इतने कन्नी देल्सु
सो ही बिकेम द किंग
काबट्टी ई मनुष्यडे तर्वाता राज जनाहि
वक्सिंग यूज्ड तू से डोंट डोंट बी अफ्टर स्मॉल रिवॉर्ड्स विच गॉड गिव्स तू यू बट बी विथ द लोड जिसस क्राइस सर्व हिम फैथफुली वन डे ही विल ही विल यू विल बी वेयर ही इस
काबट्टी वक्सिंग आर जिप्तुन्य वारु ई चिन्न चिन्न भहुमानाल वराल देवुन देखुन्छु कोरुकोकण एसु कृष्ट्वार्तन अन्नी वकरोजना आइन एम आयुन्नाहि आस्थानमलो निकी मीर वेलतार निच्छप्पे वार
सो देट इस द रिवॉर्ड विच गॉड ऑफर्ड तू अब्राहम आई मीन यस
ई भहुमानान्ने देवुड़ा अब्राहमनकु वाक्दानं जिसेड
फर्स्ट पीटर चैप्टर 5 वर्स 10
चोरंडी मधति पेतुरु आयदवाद्यायम पदोवच्चन
हाँ मेक यू परफेक्ट स्ट्रांग्ट एंड सेटल
तनानित्यमहिमकु कृष्टुनंद मीमुनी पिलिच्छन सर्व कृपान दियु देवुड़ कोण्चिम कालम श्रमपणपिमटा ताने मीमुनु पूर्लनलुगा जेसी स्तेरपर्ची बलपर्चुन
यस कॉल्ड तू इतर्नल ग्लोरी
आइन मीमुनो तनानित्यमहिमनकु पिलिच्छिनटु वंटीवाड
एंड ही विल मेक यू परफेक्ट
आइन मीमुनु परिपूर्णलुगा जस्ताड
ही विल एस्टैब्लिश यू
आइन मीमुनु स्तेरपर्स्ताड
ही विल स्ट्रांग्टन यू
आइन मीमुनु बलपर्स्ताड
ही विल सेटल यू
आइन मीमुनु स्तेरपर्स्ताड
इफ यू वॉक वर्ती ऑफ द लोड हु अथकॉल्ड यू इन्तू हिस किंगडम एंड ग्लोरी
तनीयका राज्यमनकु महिमनकु पिलिच्छिनटु वंटी आदेवुनिकी तगिनटुगा मीर नडिस्तै वन्नी वाक्दानं जस्तुनाहि
फर्स्ट तस्लोनियन्स चैप्टर 2 वर्स 12
मधति तस्लोनिकलक रासन पत्रिकार रिंदवाद्यायम पन्निंदवच्चन
हाँ फर्स्ट तस्लोनियन्स चैप्टर 2 वर्स 12 ग्लोरी, ओनर एंड इमोर्टालिटी यस
तना राज्यमनकु महिमकु मीमुनु पिलिच्छुन देवुनिकी तगिनटुगा मीर नडिच्कुन वल्नानी
सो ही इस गोइंग तू गिव अस ग्लोरी ओनर एंड इमोर्टालिटी
आइन मनकी आक्षयतनु तर्वाता महिमनु प्रभु वाक्दानं जस्तुनाहि
नाव कैली टर्न विथ मी तू रोमन चैप्टर 5 एंड रोमन चैप्टर 2 5 तू 10
रोमिलक रासन पत्रिका
डेट चैप्टर 2 वर्स 5 तू 10 इस अलोंग पासेज बट लेट अस री
यस रिंदवाद्यायम आयुनुच्ची पदिवरकु मार्च मार्च चदुकुन्दा नी काटिन्यमुनु मार्पुपंदन नी हृदयमुन अनुसरिंची उग्रत दिनमंदु अनगा देवुनी न्यायमयन तीर्पु बायल पर्चपड्डिनमंदु नीकु नीवे उग्रतनु समकोर्चुकुन्छुनाहु चद्दन्डाहि सत्क्रियन ओपिक चैछु महिमनु, गणतनु, आक्षयतनु वेदकुवारीकी नित्यजीवमुन इच्छनु पदोवच्चन सत्क्रिय चैयु वानिकनी मधति युद्धिकनी गृहस्वदेशस्तुनी कोड़ा महिमयु, गणतयु समाधानमुनु कलुगुनु चाह
सी देह इस सेज हु विल रेंडर एवरी मैन अकॉर्डिंग तू हिस डीट्स वर्स 6
चोरंडी आरोवच्चनमलो यवर आइते प्रतिवानिकी वानीवानी क्रियल चोपुन प्रतिफलमिस्तार आइनु गुरिंच्छु रायबर्तु उन्दी
बट दे हैव बाई पेशन कंटिन्यूअस इन वेल डूइंग
आइते वारु सत्क्रियन ओपिक गाच्चेस्तु उन्दाहि
हाँ दे शुड सिक फॉर ग्लोरी, ओनर, इमोर्टालिटी इतर्नल लाइफ
महिमनु, गणतनु, आक्षयतनु, नित्यजीवानी वारु कोरकोवाल
देह इस देह शुड बी वी शुड पेशनली बी फैथफुल एंड कंटिन्यू इन वेल डूइंग
काबट्टी मनु ओपिक गाउंडाली सत्क्रिय चैटमलो कोणसागा
एंड अलसो वर्स 10
तर्वाता पदोवच्चन
ग्लोरी, ओनर एंड पीस तू एवरी मैन देट वर्क अथ गुड तू द जू फर्स्ट एंड अलसो तू द जन्ताई
सत्क्रिय चैयु प्रतिवानिकी, मधति युद्धिकी गृहस्वदेशस्तुनी कोड़ा महिमयु, गणतयु समाधानमुनु कलुगुनु
ही अलसो सेज अबाउट द पनिशमेंट विच इस गिवन तू दोस वु आर कंडेंशियस दोस वु डो डो नॉट ओबे द ट्रुथ डाय एम स्किपिंग इट वर्स 8 एंड 9
अलाकिन्मितितुमितु वच्चनलो बेदमलु कुट्टिंची सत्यानिक लोभडनटु वंटी वारीकी देवुड़ इच्छेट वंटी उग्रत गुरिंच्छु कोड़ा रास्तुनाहि
हाँ सेकंड तस्लोनियन्स चैप्टर 1 वर्स 5 तू 9
सेकंड तस्लोनिकलक रास रिंदवाद्यायम
ही सेज इन दिस वर्स वस्त्र सेकंड तस्लोनियन्स चैप्टर 1 वर्स 5 तू 9 इन दिस वर्स ही सेज दिस इस द मैनिफेस्ट टोकन ऑफ द राइट्युअस जजमेंट ऑफ गॉड
काबट्टी कामना चूचनाट्य आयुनुच्ची तमिति मध्यलो दिदि ईविदमका देवुड़ अतीर्पुतियुच्चिता देवुनिकी न्यायमयन अतुनाहि
हाँ टोकन ऑफ द राइट्युअस जजमेंट ऑफ गॉड
ईविदमका अनुक्रयिंच्चिता देवुनिकी न्यायमयन अतुनाहि
देह इस देट ही मै बी काउंटेड वर्ती ऑफ द किंगडम ऑफ गॉड फॉर विथ यू अलसो सफर
मीर ये राज्यमनकैते मीर श्रमपड्डुनाहि दानिकोरकु ईविदमका मीर महिमपुंदुता कोरके मीर पिलुबड्ढिर अतुनाहि
देह इस ही गिव्स ट्रिबुलेशन तू दोस अनुराइट्युअस पीपल
काबट्टी अनित्मंतुलुगा उन्नटु वारीकी देवुड़ सिक्षा विदिस्ताड
वर्स 7
येड़ोवच्चन
एंड बट तू यू हु आर ट्रबल रेस्ट विथ अस देन द लोड जिसस क्राइस शल बी रिवील्ड फ्रॉम हेवन विच इस माइटी अंजेल्स इन फ्लेमिंग फायर टेकिंग विंजेन्स ऑन देम देट नॉट गॉड एंड देट ओबे नॉट द गोस्वेल ऑफ अवर लोड वर्स 9 हु शल बी पनिश विथ एवरलास्टिंग डिस्ट्रक्शन फ्रॉम द प्रेसेंस ऑफ हिस एंड फ्रॉम द ग्लोरी एंड हिस पावर
चोरंतु तिलुलारुन्छिन्मितिवरकुंदी प्रवयन एस्तन प्रभावन कन्पर्स्ट दोतल्तो कोड़ा परलोकमनुडे अग्निज्वाल्लो प्रत्यक्षमाई देवुन निरुगन वारीकी मन प्रवयन एसु सुवार्ता लोभडन वारीकी प्रतिदंडन चैन अपुरु मीमुनु श्रमपर्चु वारीकी श्रमयु श्रमपुंदुचुन्ना माकु मीकु मातो कोड़ा विश्रांतिन अनुक्रयिंच्चिता देवुनिकी न्यायमय
यस नाव फर्थली ही विल गिव सिटीज फॉर फैथफुलनेस
यवर आइते नम्मकत्वानी कन्पर्स्टारो वारीकी पट्टनाल अनुक्रयस्ताड
लुक चैप्टर 19 वर्स 16 तू 19
चोरंडी लुकासुवार्ता पदहारवाद्यायम पदहार नुण्डी पंथमितिवरक
हाँ देह इस द पराबिल ऑफ द टैलेंस विच इस विच ही गिव
इकड़ा तलांतुलु गुरिंचिनटु वानमुनिंच्छु प्रभु चप्तुनाहि
हाँ लुक चैप्टर 19 वर्स 16
लुकासुवार्ता पंथमितवाद्यायम
देन कैन द फर्स्ट सेइंग लोड दाई पाउंड हाथ गेन्ड 10 पाउंड्स
मधति वाडा आइन यदुटुको वच्चाया नी मेनावल्न पदि मेनारु लबिंच्छन अनि चप्पा
देन ही सेड वेल्ड ताव गुड सर्वेंट बिकॉज़ ताव आस बीन फैथफुल Then he said, well thou, good servant, because thou hast been faithful in very little, have thou authority over ten cities.
Ataru balamanchidasuda, nee, uy konchimla, nammaka, untevi, ganuka, padipatnamalame, adhikari, vayundu, mani, vaanithochepeno.
And also, he gave to the second, he gave, verse eighteen.
Alagay, pattanamalanu, rendavani, koda, ichad.
And he was given five cities, verse nineteen.
Vaaniki, pantumidhavachno, idu, pattanali ichad.
So, when we are faithful in small things.
Manam, chinnachinavatillo, prabhu, nammaka, unnapu.
When we use the gifts which God has given to us for the glory of the Lord.
Devudu, maniki, ichinatvanti, iyoka, talantulano, devuni, mayimakorakai, vaadinappu.
Now, I want to tell you about the gifts.
Chundiyoka, talantul, gurunchu, meekchappal.
There are natural gifts.
Konni prakruti sammandamayana talantuluntay.
All cannot play Kasio.
Andaru, koda, iy, Kasio keyboard, vaayunchle.
Only those who are having a gift, they will be able to play.
Yavariite, talantundu, varae vaayunchkal.
Ah, that is a natural.
Adi prakruti sammandamayana, thumivanti, var.
Ah, now, there are some people who are very good speakers, they will speak very wonderful. Kontamandhi. See, some of our politicians, they will be talking such a beautiful language and beautiful way, they will present things, they are writers.
Kontamandhi, chala, anargalanga, maatladatvanti, talantu, var, kunthundhi, rajjiki, aavatalu, var, chala, chakkaga, konni, vishyalu, varinchakala.
There is a natural gift.
Adi, variki, evadatvanti, prakruti sammandamayana, thumivanti, talantu.
Then there is spiritual gifts.
Alagay, atmaya, varal, talantu.
Gift of the Holy Spirit.
Parishuddhatma, neetvanti, var.
So, to each one of us, that gift is given.
Iy parishuddhatma, devu, neetvanti, varam, manalo, prativakkariki, evad.
If you are having a natural gift.
Meekayena, prakruti sammandamayana, varalunti.
Give to the Lord.
Vaatni, prabhu, ivandi.
Just like that young boy who gave phyllos and two widges into the hand of the Lord.
Ee videnge, ita, chinnapellavat, thandakron, idhutul, undichepulu, devuni, kichchada, avidamga, me, talantu, devuni, kivandi.
Lord will multiply it.
Devu, a talantu, urdi parustad.
And your gift will be used for the glory of the Lord.
Iyoka, talantu, iyoka, varamo, devuni, mayimakoraku, vaadavaduthundi.
But every person is given a gift, a spiritual gift, if you are a believer.
Nee, viswasi vaithe, prati vektiki, koda, devu, vaka, atmaya, varanichchuntad.
That also has to be used in the church.
Adi, koda, sangamlo, devu, koraku, vaadavadali.
So, you have to find out, what is the gift God has given to me?
Kaavati, devu, nakayemi, varanichchadu, meerukanukkavol.
This is what we are taught at the time of taking baptism and laying on our hands.
Iyoka, vishyani, bhatpismu, mariu, hastanikshapana, samyulob, meembo dishtam.
Anyway, use your gift for the glory of God, invest in the kingdom of God.
Kaavati, meekevadintvanti, varani, devuni, mayimakorakai, devuni, pani lo, pettu badiga, pettun.
Ah, when we invest in the kingdom of God.
Devu, rajjulo, pettu badiga, me, talantu, vaadinappu.
Lord will use it, Lord will use for the evangelism, judgment landing.
Devu, vaatni, suvarthi, konakoraku, sangal, sthapi, chitani, vaadukuntad.
Not for living a luxury life.
Edo, sukanga, jeevunchitani, vaadun.
But helping some poor people.
Kontamandhi, padavari, sahayan.
Educating some poor God servant children.
Devu, saavukli, vaka, pillalu, chadivin, chadivin.
It's all an investment, investment.
Iy vidangam, meeruchesay, prati, sahayam, adi, pettu badiga, parikinachupad.
Ah, invest, and Lord will reward you.
Kaavati, meerupettu badibedhte, devu, dani, kavalsan, pratifalanistad.
Ah, fifthly.
Idavadi.
Crowns.
Kirithal.
He will give different types of crowns.
Aaya, rakhalanatvanti, kirithal, pravvistad.
Um, crown of righteousness.
Neethi kirithamu.
Second Timothy, chapter four, verse eight.
Rendavati, timoti, naalgavadyayam.
This is the reward which God is giving.
Devu, ichetvanti, bahumaanam, iy vidangavuntundi.
That he will give a crown of righteousness.
Aina, neethi kirithanistad.
Henceforth, there is laid up for me a crown of righteousness, that is what apostle says at the end of his life.
Apostol, thumivanti, paulitan, iy jeevta, mugimpuloh, iy maatujaptunad, ikamethat, na koraku, neethi kirithamenchupadiyana, di antunad.
Which the Lord, the righteous judge, shall give unto me, and at that day, and not to me only, but unto all them that love his appearing.
Adinamandhu, neethigala, nyayadi, pati, ena, prabhu, adi, naaku, naaku, matramekakonda, tanapratikshatun, apechunchu, varik, andarikini, anukreinchunu.
Crown of righteousness.
Neethi kiritham.
Then crown of life.
Taravata, jeeva kirithamistanantunad.
For enduring temptation.
Iyoka, shodhana, sainchetvanti, varikoraku.
James, chapter one, verse twelve.
Yakopatrika, modati, adyayam, panindavachno.
Bluesher is the man that endureth temptation, for when he is tried, he shall receive a crown of life, which the Lord hath promised to them that love him.
Shodhana sainchu, var, danyadu, atari, shodhana, knichinavadi, prabhu, tannu, preminchu, variki, vaagdhanam chesina, jeeva kiritham, kundunu.
Revelation, chapter two, verse ten.
Taravata, prakatana, rendava dyayam, padavachno.
Ah, fear not, fear none of these things, you read, two ten.
Idugu, meerushodimpavadunatlu, apavadi, meelo, kondane, charlo, veemvad, bochunadu, padidinam, shramakalugunu, maranamu, varku, namkamuka, undumo, neenu, neeku, jeeva kirithamichchadu.
Be thou faithful unto death.
Maranamu, varaku, namkamuka, undumo.
I will give you a crown of life.
Neenu, neeku, jeeva kirithamistam.
So, crown of life is offered to them who suffer impatiently for the Lord.
Ento, namkanga, prabhu, koraku, shrampaditvanti, variki, devu, jeeva kirithan, vaagdhananjestu.
Then crown of glory.
Taravata, mayimakiritham.
For an ideally elder or shepherd.
Yavariite, nammaka, adyekshapadavani, kadhalu, guntharo, varikoraku, istanantunad.
First Peter, chapter five, verse three, four.
Modati pethru, idavadyayam, moorun, naalgavachno.
Ah, neither has been, yes, you read.
Meekappa, kimpavadina, varipena, prabhu, lainatvundaka, mandaku, madhurulagundudi, pradana, kapar, pratikshamayapudu, meeru, vaadavaranee, mayimakiritham, kunduduru.
Ah, verse four, chief shepherd shall appear, he shall receive a crown of glory.
Pradana, kapar, pratikshamayapudu, meeru, vaadavaranee, mayimakiritham, kunduduru.
That will fade not away.
Adi, eematrum, vaadipodu.
Fourthly.
Naalgavadi.
Crown of rejoicing.
Santoshak, ananda kiritham.
This is for soul veness.
Iy, atmali, sampaadinchetvanti, variki.
First Thessalonians, chapter two, verse nineteen.
Modati Thessalonikla, pattrika, rendava dyayam, pantumidhavachno.
For what is our hope or joy, your crown of rejoicing are not even he that presents in the presence of the Lord Jesus Christ at his coming.
Yalayana, gama, nirikshane, ananda maynu, adhishe, kirithamaynu, iy, mana, pravvayana, Yesu, vaka, rakkad samyavna, aine, edutam, meere, kada.
So, Lord offers these crowns to us.
Kaavati, prabhu, iyoka, kirithamlanu, maniki, varanishupaduthunad.
Incorruptible crown for winning the race, First Corinthians, chapter nine, verse twenty-five.
Modati Korinti, pattrika, thumidhavadyayam, miravai, idavachno, lo, parugupandamlo, opikga, parigetinanduku, vaadavaranee, kirithanistanantunad.
The Christian life is compared to a race.
Iyoka, Christ jeevta, vaka, parugupandamto, pochbadinte.
Ah, read nine twenty-five.
Modati Korinti, pattrika, thumidhavadyayam, miravai, idavachno, mariu, pandamandhu, poradu, prativadu, ani, vishyamlandu, metamuka, undunu, varukshayamaku, kirithamunu, kundutakunu, manamite, akshayamaku, kirithamunu, kundutakku, metamuka, unnamu.
So, a crown is given, which is a incorruptible crown, that means it will not go away.
Kaavati, ikka, ennattikini, paadai, pona, thumivanti, akshayamayatvanti, kiritham, pravvistunad.
So, the believers also are called the crown by apostle Paul.
Kaavati, viswassulu, koda, kirithani, pondatani, karuguluka, apostol, thumivanti, poulenchthunad.
Ah, for serving the Lord.
Prabhu, sevinchinanduku.
Being faithful.
Prabhu, namkanga, unnanduku.
For everything, be patiently suffering.
Ento, opigga, shramanavichunadu.
Ah, victory over temptation.
Taravata, shodhana, meeda, vijyam, sadinchunadu.
Those who love his appearing.
Aine, vaka, rakkadu, preminchinatvanti, var.
They will all be given these crowns.
Varandarakki, koda, iy kirithali, evadthai.
Ah, now, in the book of Revelation, and chapter four and five, four, also in chapter five, no, don't take it, not necessary to take. There we find, the four and twenty elders, they were all having crowns.
Prakatam, randam, naalgavadyam, idavachno, manam, chusthe, akkada, yiruvadinalu, kadhalu, talalameda, kirithal, nishupadhai.
And they were taking out their crowns and falling prostrate before God and worshiping him.
Varu, tamakirithamlanu, thiisi, krendapadavesi, prabhu, edutu, sagilpadi, aine, aaradistunad.
Ah, that is the way they worship the Lord.
Avidamga, varu, prabhu, aaradistunad.
Whatever God has given to them, the crown, even that, they put it and they worship the Lord.
Devu, variki, ichinatvanti, kirithamlanu, koda, varu, thiisi, krendapadavesi, aine, aaradistunad.
Ah, then throne.
Taravata, simhasanam.
What a wonderful, wonderful reward God is going to give to us.
Chundie, enta, adbutamayatvanti, bahumaanani, pravv, maniki, evadunad.
Actually, crown is given to the kings.
Chundie, kiritham, neetvanti, di, rajjulak, evaduthundhi.
That is why we are called kings and priests to the Lord.
Andike, manam, prabhu, vaka, yaajukalunu, rajjulamka, pilovada.
But God is offering throne to us.
Aite, prabhu, manatana, simhasanani, manaki, stanani, vaagdhananjestunad.
The first reference about throne, which is given to us believers, was, is written in First Samuel two and verse eight.
Iyoka, Bible, lo, viswassulu, ki, evadaboyatvanti, simhasanam, gurunchi, modati, samuyelu.
Ah, chapter two, verse eight, that is part of the prayer and thanksgiving prayer of Hannah.
Ikka, Hannah, chesinatvanti, kruthagnatha, praradhanalo, aame, iyoka, simhasanam, gurunchi, prastavisutundi.
I was wondering, how this woman had such a great knowledge.
Iy vidamga, iy stree, enta, gopa, vivekmanu, kaligundane, naascharipayan.
She was a woman who, without child, and crying to the Lord.
Ime, vaka, bedakorakai, aam, prarad.
Lord heard her prayers and given a child, a Samuel.
Devu, tanayoka, prarad, nalakinchi, vaka, bedani, samuyeluka, anukreinchad.
A wonderful promise, verse eight.
Inividavachno, man, chotunachundi, darithurana, adhikaratho, kurchnabettakunu, mayimakala, simhasanamunu, swatantrimpa, jaitakunu, varini, mantilo, undi, ettu, vaadu, aine.
Oh, throne of glory.
Chundim, mayivasimhasanam.
Ah, that is what the Lord does.
Prabhu, ilantikari, mulchayavatunad.
We find the same truth in Psalm one hundred and thirteen also, no, no, not read today. That he raised up the poor out of the dust and dangle, and lifted him, the beggar from the dangle, to set them among princes and to make them inherit the throne of glory. Nota, padam. What a wonderful hope she had.
Nota, padamodavakirtanlo, koda, pentakuppa, unnatvanti, var, aine, levaneti, deerul, levaneti, rajjula, madhelos, simhasanam, mayimasimhasanam, meeda, kurchnabettanantunadu, antagopa, devu, manam, kaligundunad.
Matthew, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-eight.
Matthaisuvartha, pantumidhi, yiravai, iy vidavachno.
And Jesus said unto them, verily I say unto you, that ye which have followed me in the regeneration, when the Son of Man shall sit in the throne of his glory, he also shall sit upon twelve thrones.
Taravata, nanu, vembadinchinatvanti, meeku, aine, antunadu, mayimakala, simhasanam, meeda, manushukumadu, simhasanamayapudu, meerupandrendu, gautramalu, variki, simhasanam, meeda, simhasanasinulai, teerputiichchudru, antunad.
So, Lord is offering thrones to the apostles.
Kaavati, apostol, ki, devu, simhasanalu, bahukreinchavatunad.
Ah, Son of Man shall sit on the throne himself, in his glory, you also will sit upon the twelve thrones.
Manushukumadu, tanamayimakala, simhasanam, meeda, asinulay, undunappu, nanu, vembadinchina, meerunu, pandrendu, simhasanam, meeda, asinulai, ishrayalu, variki, teerputiichchudru.
Then the crowns are offered to overcomers.
Taravata, iyoka, kirithamlu, jainchu, variki, vaagdhanachayad.
Revelation, chapter three, verse twenty-one.
Taravata, prakatam, randam, moorun, yiravai, vakatlu.
Three twenty-one, very famous verse, to the overcomers, to him that overcomeeth, will I grant to sit, sit upon, sit with me, in my throne, even as I also overcame, and am sat down with my father in his throne.
Prakatana, moorun, yiravati, neenu, jainchi, na, tandi, tokkora, aine, simhasanam, kurdchundina, prakaram, jainchu, varan, na, tokkora, na, simhasanam, kurdchundanichchadu.
Lord Jesus Christ overcame.
Pravvayana, Yesu Kristu, var, jainchar.
Ah, we saw it yesterday, how he overcame.
Aine, iy vidang, jainchadu, nenadina, chusam.
And father said, come, my son, sit on my throne, on my right hand.
Tandri, jeppey, na, kumarada, ochi, na, simhasanam, meeda, na, kudiparsham, na, asinulavon, cheppe.
We find it as a prophecy in Psalm one hundred and ten and verse two.
Taravata, nota, padavakirtanar, rendavachno, lo, iy vishyam, pravachinaporakanga, cheppinatluga, manam, chustam.
He said, sit on my right hand.
Na, vaka, kudiparsham.
Till I make all thy enemies my footstool.
Neeka, shetru, lana, ni, padapetamuka, chayamattuku, ikka, kurchnam, cheppe.
So, the Lord, Jesus Christ, overcame.
Kaavati, pravvayana, Yesu Kristu, var, aine, jainch.
And if you are an overcomer, I am an overcomer, Lord is offering to sit with him in the throne.
Kaavati, nee, unu, neenu, koda, aine, vala, jainchu, varamga, unnatlai, te, aine, simhasanamani, manakayana, vaagdhananjestunad.
Throne talks about power.
Iyoka, simhasanam.
Authority.
Adhikarani, ke, shakti, suchanagavundi.
Splendor, glory.
Iyka, mayimagana, takku, suchanagavundi.
Ah, we know, in the olden days, there were kings.
Chundie, pathidinalo, rajjulundatvanti, var.
And they used to sit on the throne.
Varu, simhasanam, meeda, kurchnatvanti, var.
And if you go to some museum, Zalander Museum and all, I think it is there.
Ame, iraganakas.
There you will find the thrones of those kings.
Meeru, Salarjeng Museum, kani, keda, museum, kelti, intakundu, rajjulu, vaadinatvanti, simhasanam, meekanipistay.
What an amount of power they had.
Chundie, antati, shakti, adhikarani, var.
Whatever they say is ruled.
Varu, iy, chevithe, adhe, niyamam.
Of course, those kings, some of them were very unrighteous.
Ante, varu, kontamandhi, rajjula, aniethu, parul.
We are not talking about the earthly crown, earthly throne.
Kaavati, vaka, bu sammandamayatvanti, simhasanam, bu sammandamayana, kirithal, gurunchu, mana.
But the Lord is offering his throne to us.
Aite, prabhu, tanasimhasanani, manaku, vaagdhananjestunad.
See, our assembly has been very, very fortunate or very blessed to hear such wonderful messages in the olden days through his servant, brother Baxing.
Mani, vaka, mandirallo, tanadasu, neetvanti, Baxingar, dwara, ilantichakani, vartamana, vinitaku, manak, danyate, evadindi.
Ah, there was a convocation, I don't know which year, nineteen eighty-two or eighty-four or something.
Pantunal, enavay, rindulono, enavay, naluguno, jaringatvanti, convocation.
Javashama.
Javashama, lo, jaringinak.
And all the eight days, brother used to read this verse, Revelation three twenty-one, and then he will say, ten steps to the throne.
Taravata, prati, roju, koda, convocation, lo, iy prakatana, moorun, yiravai, vakatlu, chadivin, taravata, simhasanani, ke, padimetlu, hane, thumivanti, vartamana, ichchadvanti, var.
Ah, he used to talk about throne life.
Ayoka, simhasanam, vaka, jeevta, gurunchu, maatlad.
And how to get into that throne.
Ayoka, simhasanani, iy vidang.
How to have an overcoming life.
Iy vidang, jeejeevta, kaligundalo.
Ah.
Bodinchetvanti, var.
Resurrected body.
Taravata, ipudu, punaruttanayav, shereera.
Philippine, chapter three, verse twenty-one.
Philippine, rasinpatrika, mooravadyayam, yiravai, vakatlu, vachno.
You know, yesterday, we were talking about resurrection in the evening, the mystery of resurrection.
Nenadina, na, iyoka, punaruttanam, iyoka, marman, gurunchu, dhanistocham.
Ah, why are we interested in the resurrection body?
Indukki, vaka, mayimashereera, gurunchu, manak, asakti.
Why are we interested in the body of Lord Jesus Christ after his resurrection?
Yesu Kristu, var, trigi, lechina, taravata, kaligunna, shereera, gurunchu, asakti, manak, induk.
Yesterday, I was talking about it.
Dany, gurunchu, nenadina, chepptocham.
Ah, he could integrate and disintegrate.
Aina, tanutanu, kalupukakaliginadu, taravata, vebachinchukakaliginadu.
He could appear and disappear.
Aine, pratikshamayadu.
He could travel very long distance within a short time.
Adhrishamayadu, chala, doru, kodhi, samyuloni, vallakaliginadu.
But at the same time, he had a body which can be touched.
Adhe, samyulolo, thaki, sparsa, kaligetvanti, shereera, kogaliginadu.
Ah, that is what we find.
Iy vishyal, nenadina.
His body could walk through a wall.
Aaya, vaka, godad, dwara, vallakaliginatvanti.
Why am I interested in this?
Dany, endu, na, kindu, kasakti.
Lord wants to give such a body to you and me. Kindly turn with me to Philippine chapter 3, verse 21. Who shall change our wild body that it may be fashioned like unto his glorious body, according to the working whereby he is able even to subdue all things unto himself. Ah, what is our body? Deena shariyam, lowly body. That is why after some day you don't, you are not able to see, you are not able to hear, you are not able to walk, you have got knee pain. Why? It is a lowly body. That is our body. Lord of promises, a body, likened to the body of Jesus Christ. His body is resurrected body, glorious body. That is one other word. That he gives us a glorious body. Thirdly. Righteous shall shine as sun. Righteous people, with, Matthew chapter 13, verse 43. Ah, Matthew chapter 13, verse 43. Then shall the righteous shine forth as the son, the kingdom of their father, who hath ears to hear, let him hear. Who is righteous? All those who are born again, they are righteous. You know, we are not righteous by ourselves. But he makes you righteous. And they will shine as sun in the kingdom of their father. And ninthly. Shine as stars in the sky. Ah, Daniel chapter 12, verse 2:3. Yesterday we read verse 2, but we did not read verse 3. Verse 2 says. Many of them that sleep in the dust of the earth shall awake, some to everlasting life, some to shame and everlasting condemnation, condemn. Ah, we have explained it yesterday, so I am not explaining. And it is very clear. All those who are dead in the grave, they will rise again, some to everlasting life, some to everlasting condemnation. Now, note verse 3. They that are wise shall shine as the brightness of the firmament and they that turn many to righteousness as the stars for ever and ever. Ah, there are two groups of people there. One is, one is those who are wise. You know, there is, there is a verse in second Timothy chapter 3. No, don't take it. Wise unto salvation. The holy scriptures, he is able to make you wise unto salvation. There is, I will put it this way, I will put it this way. Many people don't think that they need salvation. Some people say, I don't want your Jesus, I don't want your salvation. They are foolish. According to the Bible, they are foolish. They are not wise to obtain salvation. If you are a believer. You have come to that state, you are wise. That is why you obtain salvation. You are wise unto salvation. That is why you are holding the Bible and reading the Bible. So, who is this group, who are those who are wise unto salvation? Ah, how, how, what they will get? Ah, they will, they wise unto shine, they will shine as brightness of the firmament. Ah, early in the morning, you can see this glory or the brightness of the firmament. So Daniel is coming, telling, that is what they are going to get. Now there is another group. Second part of that verse. They that turn many to righteousness. Now, who is that who turn others to righteousness? If you are a Sunday school teacher and if you lead a child to the Lord, you are, you are turning that child to righteous. If you are going to the open air and preach the gospel and somebody received the Lord Jesus Christ, you are turning him to righteous. If you teach or preach and teach the Bible and encourage believers to live a righteous life. To do good works. They are turning many to righteous. Oh, all servants of God, all those who are serving, they should be turning others to righteous. Others to Lord Jesus Christ, who is righteous. And they will be like the stars. Ah, now if you want to know about stars. Ah, you have to turn to 1 Corinthians and chapter 15. I have very little time, but I want to know this. Kindly turn with me to 1 Corinthians chapter 15. Now, verse 40. There are also celestial bodies and terrestrial, but the glory of the celestial is one and the glory of the terrestrial is another. Ah, he is talking about resurrection, huh?
Here, here.
Verse 42. Now, he is talking about two types of celestial bodies. Those who have studied a little bit of science, they will know what I am talking. You know, look at sun. Sun shines. In the day, in the night. Only thing is we don't see, but in America you can see that same sun. It shines, day in and day out, for years together. From the time it is created, it is shining, shining, shining. That is a celestial body. All the, all the stars are like that. It goes on giving light and heat. Very powerful energy is sent out. Till God allows it to shine, it will shine. Now, there are terrestrial bodies. Now you take moon. It cannot shine by itself. We see it shining, we see it shining.
Full moon.
Ah, we think it is giving a light. But it is not able to give any light by itself. It only reflects the light of. Apostle says. After the resurrection. Ah, there is gradation. Ah, that means there are people who are not able to shine by themselves. But there will, there will be some people, they will shine like the stars in the sky. That is what he is talking about. There are celestial bodies, there are terrestrial bodies. Verse 40, middle, the glory of the celestial one and the glory of the terrestrial is another. There is one glory for sun, another glory for moon, another glory for stars and one star differeth from another star in glory. Now, after resurrection. A person, a believer, who believed in the Lord Jesus Christ but did not do any good works. He did not pray, he did not do fasting prayer, he did not do any arms, he did not give to the Lord, he did not honor God's servants, prophets, and like that. But they will be like moon only. But those who lead others to righteousness. They will get, they will be like the stars in the sky. And one glory of one star differeth from the glory of another. That means those people who worked many more years, they did qualitative spiritual ministry. Ah, they will be shining as stars. That is what Daniel says. That is what resurrection. That is what apostle talks in 1 Corinthians chapter 15. Ah, so, if you lead others to righteousness. Lord wants to reward you. And it is compared to the stars in the sky. Thirdly. Everlasting life. Matthew chapter 19, verse 27 to 29. I started with this question. Ah, Peter went and told Jesus, what will we get? Verse 27. Ah, we have forsaken all and followed thee, what shall we have therefore? Oh, you will sit with me in the throne. Ah, verse 29. Oh, a hundredfold. And shall inherit everlasting life. That is the reward which God is going to give to us. The reward which God is going to give to those who serve the Lord. Will make the, make you pillar in the new Jerusalem. Revelation chapter 3 and verse 12. To him that overcomeeth will I make pillar in the temple of my God and he shall go no more out and I will write upon him the name of my God and the name of the city of my God, which is new Jerusalem, which come up down from heaven from my God and I will write upon my name, him, my name. So, these are the rewards which God is giving. I depends upon our works. So, we should make a decision. Lord, I will serve the Lord. I am not telling that all should become full-time servant, that is not what we mean. Fully surrender to the Lord. Tell the Lord, not my will, Lord, but I will be done. Now, quickly, we will go through the letter to the seven churches. Revelation chapter 2. There we know, seven letters are written to seven churches. And in every letter. Ah, there it is written, he that overcomeeth. Ah, he that overcomeeth. Verse 7. That is chapter 2, verse 7. To, second part of verse 7. To him that overcomeeth will I give to eat of the tree of life. Which is in the midst of the paradise of God. So, the overcoming believer will be, will get, will eat from the tree of life. Second church. Kindly turn with me to chapter 2 and verse 11. He that, second part, he that overcomeeth shall not be hurt of the second death. Third church. Ah, verse 17. He that, to him that overcomeeth, will I give eat of the hidden manna. And will give him white stone and in the stone a new name written, which no man knoweth, saving, he that receiveth. So, he is giving these to them. Fourthly, to verse 26. He that overcomeeth and keepeth my words unto the end, to him will I give power over the nations. Verse 26, second part. We are not going deep into what is hidden manna, but certain things are very clear, but certain things are not very clear at, just by reading. Chapter 3 and verse 5. Fifthly, he that overcomeeth, the same shall be clothed in white raiment.
ऐद़ा वसंगनीकरायवन उत्तर, जयिंचुवाड़ु आलागुन तल्लन वस्त्रमल दरिंचुक
आई विल नॉट ब्लॉटआउट हीस नेम आउट डी बुक ऑफ़ लाइफ
जीव ग्रंधमलो नतन पेरेंतमात्रनु तुडुपु पेट्टका, उन्तुनु नट्वन्ड
आ, आई विल कन्फेस हीस नेम बिफर डी फादर एंड बिफर हीस एंजेल
नातंद्रिय इदित्तुनु, आयन दोतल इदित्तुनु, अतनी पेरु ओपुकुंदुनु
सिक्सली
आरवधिगा
आ, वस 12
अनिन्डावचन
हिम डेट ओवरकमत, विल आई मेक पिलर इन डी टेंबल ऑफ़ माय गॉड, विच वे आर ऑलरेडी रेड
मानम इत्तमुंदे चदुकुनट्टुका जयिंचुवननी, नादेवनी आलयमलो, योक स्तंबमगा चेसेदु
आ, सो, ऑल डीज़ आर प्रॉमिस्ड इन डी बुक ऑफ़ रेलियशन, सेवनली, वस 21
तर्वाता येड़ा वधि, मुड़वध्यामीरु योकटावचन
विच वे आर ऑलरेडी डिस्कस
इत्तमुंदे कन्नु चूस्युन्तुन
तू हिम डेट ओवरकमत, विल आई ग्रांट तू सिट विथ मी ऑन माय थ्रोन
नैन जयिंचिना तंद्रतो कोड़ा, आयन सिमासनमंदु कुर्चुंनु प्रकारमु
एवं आई अलसो ओवरकेम, एंड आई एम सिट डाउन विथ माय फादर इन हीस थ्रोन
कान नैन जयिंचिना तंद्रतो कुर्चुनु प्रकारम, जयिंचुवनन नातो कोड़ा नासिमासनमंदु कुर्चुंन
एंड, इट क्लोजेस विथ ए वंडरफुल वस
अद्भुतमयन नट्वन्टी वाक्यमतोटी
जीसस क्राइस यूज़ तू, यूज़ तू रिपीट डिस ही डेट आदन यर, लेट हीम हियर, व्हाट डी स्पिरिट साइत अंडो डी चर्च
संगमलो तो आत्मचप्पुचुन्न माटा चेवीगलवाडु विनुनुगाक
अवर टाइम इस अप
मानक समय वाइपिंग
फॉर फ्यू मिनट्स, लेट अस बी ऑन अवर नीस
कुद्धी क्षणालु, मानम मोकल्लमेदा कोद्दाम
वे आर, वे आर हर्ड, लास्ट थ्री डेज़
गडिचिनट्वन्टी मुड़ दिनालो, मानम अनेक माट्लु विंट्वच्चाम
इन वीकनेस, वे आर बीन स्कैनिंग थ्रू डी वर्ड ऑफ़ गॉड
एन्तो बलहियनत्तोटी, देवनी योक वाक्यनी, मानम परिषीलिस्तुवच्चाम
व्हाट इस योर रेस्पॉन्स
मी योक प्रतिस्पन्न एन्टी
आई विल मेक ए स्टार्ट प्रेय
नैन योक चिन्न प्रार्धन चेस्तनु
आफ्टर डेट, लेट अस बी ऑन अवर नीस
आतुर्वाता मानम मोकल्लमेदा उन्दाम
एंड, लेट अस सर्ट अवर हार्ट्स
मानी योक हुर्दियालु परीक्षिंचुक
एंड, लेट, लेट अस कमिट अवर्सेल्स तू डी लॉर्ड
मानल्ल मानम प्रभुकी, प्रतिष्ठजिस्कु
टेल डी लॉर्ड, लॉर्ड, मेक मी एन ओवरकमर
प्रवाह, नन्नु कोड़ा, जयिंचुवननीका चेयेन्डन अडुगदाम
लॉर्ड, थैंक यू फॉर, यू आर ए लॉर्ड वो विल रिवॉर्ड एवं ए कप ऑफ़, कप ऑफ़ वाटर
प्रवाह, यवनकैन योक गिन्नेर चन्नीलिस्ते, दानीकोड़ा मेरु प्रतिफलम इच्छेट नट्वन्टी देवडु
यस, एवं ए कप ऑफ़ वाटर, इफ यू गिव इन डी नेम, यू विल नॉट लूज़ ए रिवॉर्ड डेट इस, यू विल गेट ए रिवॉर्ड
काबट्टी, प्रभु योक शिष्युडं जेप्पी, वानकोक
हो मच मोर व्हेन वे सर्व हीम
योक चिन्न गिन्नीलिस्ते
हो मच मोर व्हेन वे आर फेथफुल
आयनिक नमकंगाउन्टी इनकेन्त पहुमानमिस्तार
सो, आई विल, आई विल प्रेय, देन बिल अस बी ऑन अवर नीस
नैन चिन्न प्रार्धन चेस्तनु तर्वाता मोकर्नलमेदा उन्नड्डी
कंटिन्यू तू बी ऑन अवर नीस
मोकल्लमेदा कोन्सागंडी
कमिट अवर्सेल्स तू डी लॉर्ड
मानल्ल मानम प्रभुक अपकित्तुन
डिस इस बिटवीन यू एंड लॉर्ड